I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I take a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with additional certified classified personal actions for consideration item E. S. 3.
And a motion to approve the agenda with amendments. Is there a second?
A seconded.
Seconded by Janine. Any discussion? Do you want to do a roll call or hands? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. We do have several public comments tonight. For those who are out in my hallway as well, you will be limited to five minutes and I'll do the thirty second notification and then also a stop sign as well. And we do have several, so I'll be trying to keep it to the five minutes tonight also. Ramona Vreeland, would you like to start us, please?
Yes.
Should I stand here?
Um, to the public, please. Oh, okay, great. Okay, well, I have notes, so I'll do them quick, okay? Thank you for hearing me tonight. Just FYI, I work at Bernadine Six, fifth grade, ELA. Okay, so, and I'm here tonight to continue a conversation about possible collaboration with a children's museum 501(c)(3), which is currently being established in Garden City. I know that my fellow collaborator Linda Adams has already spoken to Dr. Carlin, is that correct?
Correct.
And concerning a bold request that the school district donate a building in the future. And I'm not really here to talk about that now, although I do have a letter from Linda that she's asked me to distribute to you along with several pages of brainstorm inspiration. That it's an extensive and inspiring brainstorm list about what a children's museum in Garden City could look like. The reasons that I'm here right now as a teacher are to share with you how this conversation got started and invite your input, especially in the future, not right away, right tonight, just, you know, put it in the thinker. And is it okay to contact me to invite contact about this subject at my school email or should I provide my personal?
That's fine.
Okay, awesome. So, Arv Vreeland at, you know the rest. So, a large part of my day as a fifth grade teacher at Bernadine Six is spent redirecting kids toward a very rigorous curriculum and away from being kids. And I'm sure that you know what that entails. Here's today's haul, which I didn't really mind because I got to bring visual demonstrations, right? A glass of Orbeez at the end of the day that came into homeroom, you know, almost spilled on the floor, right, a dismissal. A tank that was being used in fourth hour while we're, which is awesome, it's an origami tank, right? We're studying, we're in the benchmark unit on how conflict shapes a society. And, but they were supposed to be annotating, so that was kind of, you know, had to redirect. And then this, you know, amazing, beautiful rubber band bracelet that's being, you know, shared kitty corner across the tables as I'm trying to do a read aloud, you know? So, I try to incorporate arts integration in my curriculum. A march comes in like a lion, goes out like a lamb, onomatopoeia, posters, buzz, you know? But there are still, you know, so many moments where the kids are craving more. And a couple of weeks ago, it was a Friday. During one of my many redirection moments, I was overcome with a sinking feeling that I wish I could redirect my kids instead of just back toward the curriculum. I wish I could redirect them toward something they can do in their off hours, you know? Let's focus on school now, but, you know, how about check out the children's museum this weekend? You can experiment with the greenhouse there instead of my house plants at the window that end up, you know, falling on the floor. Whoops, oh, that was another thing today. So, I know that most of my homeroom kids and most of the kids at this school probably have never been to a children's museum. My social emotional learning buddy teacher once asked, like, not too long ago, that's what put the thought in my head, asked had the kids been to any children's museum and the majority of my kids, maybe two out of twenty-five, even like, knew what a children's museum was. We're talking Wichita, we're talking, you know, Flint Hills Discovery Center in Manhattan. They just don't get an opportunity, right? And so, it was a, maybe it was a Friday, it put me in a good mood, I got like, well, why not? Why not? Why just settle for that sinking feeling? Isn't Garden City ready for something like this? We've got two breweries. We've got a Sam's Club. We've got a, you know, we've got a outdoor water park in the works and we've got an indoor water park that's been there for several days. It's time, it's time that we do this. So, and we've definitely got the kids, we've got the STEM and STEAM oriented kids who need that kind of outlet to supplement rigorous academic experience they are already receiving at USD 457. So, this is today, me being here is an invitation to anyone within the USD 457 network to contribute to the conversation, contribute to this conversation and ultimately help walk the talk. Join this team, you know, that we're just barely putting together right now. We need some task masters, we need some people who are organized and experienced with 501(c)(3)'s. So, thank you for hearing me and I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you, Ramona, for taking the time.
Yes, thank you. I'm excited.
Can I, wish I leave these here? Will you take them? Shall I give them?
Stephanie, you'll take them.
Okay, thanks. And it's okay if I go, right? Yeah.
No, you have to stay for a hold on.
I didn't want to be rude. So, okay. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate my job, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. Thank you all. Hi. I'm here to represent one hundred and two community members. We started a petition last Thursday and so I'm just going to read some of the comments for you and then if it's okay, I can hand it to you if you guys want to look through. But it says, "This petition is being submitted on behalf of concerned community members. Since last Thursday, March eighteenth, we have collected one hundred and two signatures. While this number is not reflective of every community member who disagrees with force-based coverings and other forced NPIs, non-pharmaceutical interventions, I would encourage you to consider the ramification of one hundred and two community members showing up to speak at this meeting." And this is what the petition says. It says, "With the rescinding of both the Finning County and the Garden City face covering ordinances, we are uniting to ask the school districts in our community to honor the gating criterion and the levels that were created with the guidance of the KDHE at the beginning of the school year. At this point, masks along with other NPIs, non-pharmaceutical interventions, should be recommended, not required. Our community data has decreased in severity, we're very thankful for that, and we're thankful that we have been in school for the majority of the year. We are asking that the school boards in Finning County would recognize the autonomy of parents and families over their children's health." And so, I would like to read some of the comments. Lisa Stein wrote, "Please end the mask mandate in our schools." One person wrote, "Perfeet him a chance," his name was Chrissy, who's last name. Let's see, Rita Harold said, "They should never have been wearing them to begin with. It's not safe for children. If parents want to be stupid and wear them, fine, but don't punish the children with this scam." Betsy Roberts said, "Please do what is right for these kids. We need education to be our primary concern now that these kids have missed so much." Again, we're thankful we've been in school. I appreciate you all for that, as some school districts have not yet. So, thank you. Chris Velosio said, "Recommend not mandate masks and vaccines." Kevin Thompson said, "It's time to get back to what science is supporting. Get rid of face masks." Shelley Doll wrote, "School districts must longer force any medical decisions upon students or staff, especially unproven and dangerous interventions that are not regulated. Forced masking is unethical and unproven. Please put an end to ridiculousness." And I would add on to that, if it does work and the data show that this worked, then we don't need to use it anymore. Or I would ask you, you know, are we making a medical decision or is it a dress code? If it's a dress code, okay, but if it does affect health negatively, then when is enough enough and we can move on and let people, you know, not have it over their face? Eric Doll wrote, "Please stop the unethical and unproven forced mask mandate. School districts must no longer force any medical decisions upon students or staff, especially unproven and dangerous interventions that are not regulated." And again, that's, I think that's a concern in most people that sign this is, a lot of this is we're just doing it because, but, you know, we're not checking in on oxygen levels, we're not having teachers and students be regularly examined. And so, that is a concern. Missy Byer says, "Please take the masks off our kids, let them breathe." Darla Sammy says, "Stop the government from forcing unregulated mandates." D. Ruck, who is a doctor of chiropractic, said, "I'm signing for all of my patients who have kids in school who are against prolonging this disputed mandate." Rose Kuehlkamp said, "Please, please let kids take these same masks off. There's no evidence they do anything and we need to let our kids breathe." Amanda Minor said, "Our kids need to see our faces, especially our kindergarten students. Do you know how hard it is to teach letters and sounds if they can't see our mouths to decipher a B from P or D? Our babies are suffering because of these masks. They need to see our facial expressions." Paula Danifer said, "There's no evidence to support mask wearing any longer. Do the right thing and let these kids and teachers breathe. Yes to wisdom, no to fear." Terry York said, "All students should be supported to freely communicate in school without the limitations the masks place upon them. To restrain them by forced mask wearing is unconscionable." Mark Johnson said, "Time to stop the grade standing and allow parents to make the choice. No one is saying that those who want to wear a mask can't, but those that do not want to should no longer be made to." Amanda Rosen said, "Praying this gets passed." If you know Amanda, that's no surprise. Let's see. Oh, sorry, I lost the name on that. Dr. Green, Dr. Jerome Green, who's also a doctor of chiropractic, said, "Mandate, please remove mask mandates for staff and students." And then Isaac Otero said, "Get rid of the masks, follow the original plan and stop changing it." The data in the district and county are showing you it is time to lower levels and remove mask mandates. Again, I just want to say thank you all for your hard work. It hasn't been a fun year for anyone, but we appreciate that we've been in school. I'm here again representing one hundred and two community members. I'm also representing my future, living here. I grew up here. I'm a product of your school district. I love it. I'm very thankful and I want my kids to go through the school district. And so, you know, it matters and I worry if we don't stop it here, the next thing we'll be looking at is unregulated mask man, or vaccine mandates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Shelby Hanneman?
Hello, thank you very much. My name is Shelby Hanneman. I'm a resident here in Garden City, Kansas and a business owner. I'm, I'm just coming to you today just to talk about the gating criteria. I would really like to encourage you to, like Wyatt was saying, follow the gating criteria and stop forcing children and teachers to wear masks. I was going to read an email from a friend of mine who asked me to read it and my phone died while I was waiting, so I'm not able to read it. But, but I do want to thank you guys. Last year, when, when COVID started and, and spring break got extended and we went to, went to the new school year, I pulled my kids out of school because I felt like requiring them to wear a mask every day to school just seemed preposterous to me. And I just want to thank, really, I want to thank the special ed department because they, they helped us get them into online gifted program through the school district. Specifically, I wanted to shout out to Roxanna Reed from Florence Wilson, who's been awesome, helping me navigate through all this. And so, yeah, I just, I just want to, want you guys to realize that we need to make the decision for choice, not force. So, when you force somebody to do something, it really takes away their right to be able to choose what, 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 what's best for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Nathan Kells?
Hello, Nathan Kells. Wanted to thank you, as several of the others did, that we were able to be in school this year, a lot of places aren't, even till today. But I want to begin my address kind of like I did last time. There's a lot of risk in this world, walking out of our house in the morning, car crash, lightning strike, virus. But in my opinion, the fear that's been pushed on us by the national media down to our local health board is ridiculous. When a virus that doesn't have any effect on our kids is dictating what a lot of us are doing. I read this quote today from a Dr. Cower, M.D., and I think it sums up where I think we're at. "The greatest threat to our health, life, rights, liberties, and freedoms are governments. Nothing should scare us more than governments knowingly harming us under the guise of protecting us. Democracy is when governments fear the people. Tyranny is when people fear governments." I would extol that that governments goes down to our local health board and the school board. From my understanding, you have given the final say to district superintendent as to the levels we'll operate in this county. Focusing on this year, we've been stuck at three and a half. Here's the county indicators that it says were moderate and increased levels. Moderate level was one to two indicators flagged, increased is two to three indicators flagged. I won't sit here and read through all six of these indicators, but to me, we have zero indicators flagged. So, my question is, why have we not been going down in the levels in our school? And to me, if there's no indicators today according to your gating criteria, we should have no levels. There's, it should be normal because nothing here is flat. In my opinion, masks do nothing. In fact, there's lots and lots of evidence to show that they are actually harmful. I talked about the mental health for our kids last time I spoke. Bring that up again today. Reuters did a survey of seventy-four school districts after lockdown. Seventy-four, seventy-four percent increase in multiple indicators of mental health issues and ninety percent higher absenteeism and disengagement. I say enough is enough. COVID is not a viral risk to our kids. Masks and restrictive social distancing is. Any teacher who's wanted the vaccine in our county has been, had adequate time to get it, if they so wish, and they can continue to wear a mask if they wish. But Dr. Carlin, I'm calling on you as administrator to immediately cancel all alert levels as per the gating criteria that you guys have used for 457. And school board, if the administration is not willing to do that, to me, it is your power to take that power back that you granted them and make the decision for our kids to drop this mask mandate at the very absolute minimum, make it optional if they want to continue to wear one, that is fine. But don't make the rest of them wear it. Lot of stuff that I kind of skipped over, but I didn't want to bore you with all the statistics, but be glad to share anymore if anybody had any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Stephanie Stewart?
Hello. My name is Stephanie Stewart and I have lived in Garden City my whole life. I've had two of my kids in the school district here and one of my kids in the school district over in Holcomb. I have not been in favor of this mask mandate ever since it began. I don't wear one. I haven't worn one. I'm in church every Sunday with two to three hundred people. I've been to several different churches in this town. Nobody in there is wearing a mask, maybe a few. It should remain a choice. First of all, I appreciate everything that each of you are doing and the amount of pressure that you're under, I'm sure. I was going to just read a couple of paragraphs here from an article by a doctor. We need to be taking opinions from many different doctors into consideration, not just pick and choose the ones that we want. So, I'm just going to read over here. Dr. Margarita Grease Bryson, "M.D., Ph.D. is a consultant neurologist and neuropsychologist with a Ph.D. in pharmacology with special interest in neurotoxicology, environmental medicine, neuroregeneration, and neuroplasticity. This is what she has to say about face masks and their effects on our brains. The re-inhalation of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flooding of carbon dioxide. We know that human brain is a very sensitive, is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. There are nerve cells, for example, in the hippocampus that can, can't be longer than three minutes without oxygen. They cannot survive. The acute warning symptoms are headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, issues in concentration, slowing down of reaction time, reactions of the cognitive system. However, when you have chronic oxygen deprivation, all of those symptoms disappear because you get used to it. But your, your efficiency will remain impaired and the undersupply of oxygen in your brain continues to progress. We know that neurodegenerative diseases take years to decades to develop. If today you forgot your phone number, the breakdown in your brain would have already started twenty to thirty years ago. While you're thinking that you have gotten used to wearing your mask and rebreathing your own exhaled air, the degenerative process in your brain are getting amplified as your oxygen deprivation continues." That's just a small portion of that article. What do you think's happening to our kids all day long? I've got one of my kids who's been in the school district who got sick this year. I haven't been sick. My other kids haven't been sick. He's been wearing the mask all day long and also at work. We can't go on like this forever. There's, the, the threat is low now. It needs to end. It honestly does. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephanie. Shelley Smith?
Hi. It's Ray, my granddaughter. You saw her back in December. I'm just going to read the email that I sent to you, just so it's out there for the public. So, I started out, as I always encourage everyone else to do, "I want to start out thanking you for your service on the board this year and I want to reach out with kindness, but much capitalized frustration. Twice this year, I've asked you to revisit the gating criteria which you set in place at the beginning of the school year. When I sent an email earlier, I did receive replies back from a few of you. Thank you for that. You stated you would not revisit these policies and we marched on through the school year. Even though I disagreed with making the students and the teachers accountable for the health of the entire county, I could at least respect your decision to stick by your policies. You stayed the course with the negative consequences of the gating criteria. However, based on what I see on our own school website, you are now disregarding your own policies by not adjusting the operational levels based on positive gating criteria. I truly have a higher expectation level for those in authority right here. You know, if I see you guys on the street, I may see you in the store. We're just heartland American people. I am deeply disappointed you are not recording our students and teachers with the positive consequences of your gating criteria policies. We have seen this total cold abuse of authority across our country and the world this past year. You are creating a climate of disrespect and mistrust for authority right here in our community by not adhering to your own policies. What do we tell our students when they ask, "Why are the operational levels not at the gating criteria levels?" We either say, "Well, they're the authority, they get to make the rules, they don't have to follow them," whatever, make something up, I don't know, without teaching them to be disrespectful. So, please stick to your policies and give positive consequences for where we are now. And I also want to add to that, I made a few inquiries today of people. For, as for an example, I was told by one teacher, the students get one hour of, I'm sorry, for every hour, they get to take their mask off for one minute. And then I also learned that in this building, for people that have a private office, when you're at your desk, you can take your mask off, which makes sense. So, what I'm asking is if, if you're not willing to base our operation levels on our gating criteria levels, that you afford our students and teachers the same courtesy that people in this building. I know she doesn't have an office to herself, but she does have a desk. Those classmates have become her family. She's been around them all school year. Can't she at least have the same courtesy of complete mask time when she's at her desk and her expanded office like, like you guys do in this building? And, you know, I'm not dogging you for that. You've worked hard for your positions. This has been a really stinky year. And if you're not willing to do that, then I'm going to charge and challenge each of you board members to live how they do. Mask on all day. One minute per hour, you can take it off. Twenty-minute lunch, take it off, or whatever they get. I know it's pretty dine and dash kind of thing. And then you leave yours on and see what their day's like. I just talked to parent after parent and their kids are so frustrated and just feel like there's no hope. This is going to be their life forever. They followed the rules, but, you know, we feel like the board and admin are not playing by them. Do you have anything you want to say? Okay. Thank you.
Angela Tolberg?
Hello. As a reminder, I have five kids in the Garden City district. For second semester, they are all still considered either remote learners or blended. I would love to see you do away with this school mask mandate, even though they are only in the building usually for a couple of hours. I personally have never believed that there has been any science behind wearing a mask as a means of preventing COVID. However, there has been science to support certain health risks connected to wearing a mask. Science is defined as the pursuit and application of knowledge and understanding of the natural and social world following a systematic methodology based on evidence. A suggestion or recommendation to wear a mask such as the CDC and local health departments have promoted for months are not science. A recommendation should not be and never should have been the basis of a mask mandate, especially when pertaining to something as serious as forcing children to wear them in order to attend school. As of this week, there are no new positive cases in Finning County and the trend has been that numbers have continued to go down the last several weeks. We have a death rate of forty-nine people, which is less than one percent of our six thousand five positive cases. That's not even taking into consideration our county population of over thirty-nine thousand. If any of you are actually looking for science to validate allowing a mask mandate to expire, it's right in front of you. There is no justification for furthering the mask mandate and doing so would definitely bring to light the lack of science being taken into consideration when making COVID protocol decisions. USD 457 spent countless man-hours and resources to compile their six levels of operations last summer. The lack of transparency in the decision-making process since then has been concerning to say the least. And as a parent, it appears that you came up with the elaborate six-level plan to give me the feeling that getting back to normal was a possibility if numbers would just go down to safer levels. Well, the numbers in Finning County have been going down and the district has been conveniently quiet. We have not moved lower than an operational level of three point five. Regardless of numbers, I've heard that now teachers are being told to potentially prepare to wear masks all year. This is alarming. It's actually borderline tyrannical to me. What other criteria does the decision-making team want met? Why did we even come up with this operational level to begin with if we weren't going to adhere to the plan? Why isn't the school board a part of these operational level decisions? They're the public servants voted in to represent us. I thank the board member Jennifer, who has stood by and tried to hold the line for our parental, our parental, sorry, I kept up on here, for our parental rights against the unlawful threats of legal action that the governor, oh, I'm sorry. Well, my point was, the governor has had legal threats, I know, over in school districts that don't want to abide by your mask mandate. And I know that there's also just been other issues and other influences that have basically taken precedent over our children's health and education. It concerns this family enough to seriously consider why we would desire this kind of leadership to be in charge of our kids' education. It's making our family basically step back and really seriously consider why we're here. If we have no say, our words don't matter, parents' voice aren't taken into consideration because nothing that we say, no science that we can show, nothing affects the levels that we move to. It's all done by a secret team. So, that's all I needed, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all of the public comments for tonight and I don't believe we have any other things on stage. Do you have any correspondence? Thank you. At this time, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Alex to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Jennifer. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Thank you. That takes us to item F1 COVID, planning update. I believe Linda's going to lead us with that, correct? I believe Linda's gonna lead us with that, correct?
Correct.
Madam Chairman, we would like to offer Colleen Prince an opportunity to present before our, my part of the presentation. We're all part of the same presentation, so it was just, does she go before me or?
Well, you're part of the presentation, so how do you want to start?
So, let, let the her go.
Okay.
Are you ready, Colleen?
For the opportunity to speak today about the continuation of COVID-19 in Finney County. I'm excited for the report progress in our overall numbers and provide an update regarding vaccination distribution here in Finney County. The data I'm sharing with you today from our dashboard update from this afternoon. There are currently 14 active cases, there are 6,005 total positive cases and 10,853 total negative cases. One individual is currently hospitalized at St. Catherine Hospital with COVID-19. According to Finney County residents, have passed away due to the virus. We're grateful for the work that our community has done to slow the spread of COVID-19 and ask our residents to continue in active part in keeping our numbers low. Please wear face masks in public, wash your hands with soap and water for 20 seconds and regularly sanitize frequently used diapers. In the subsequent slides, you'll see the trend over the past year from March 2020 until now in hospitalizations, positive cases, the number of those tested, and positive superimposed over the cumulative case count and the positivity rate. As you can see here, these were the hospitalizations from last year. Last spring, we had this initial peak here throughout April and May. Then this last fall, when we went complete, well, we went hybrid and then complete remote, this is the information that we're basing that, that decision off of, so the hospitalizations here as a peak. Highest where our hospital was overrun, November, November 16th was when the mask mandate was implemented. And then you can kind of see a pretty gradual decrease in cases here to current times with a, around two hospitalizations of each and average. Here's also the same one of the positive cases, similar trend lines in those positive cases that follows right along with those peaks and hospitalizations as well. Again, mask mandate going into place. And then about two weeks later, that's when you really saw the decline in positive cases. Here's our COVID-19 cases, this is the superimposed over our cases per week and residents tested per week, you can see the same trend line here and then this is the cumulative case count. Positivity rate, similar trend lines as well for the positive cases per week. Per week are, this is the red bar, the blue is the cumulative percentage positive. So you can see your positivity rate is very low right now. Same kind of peak, same trend line here as well. Last week, Governor, oh, sorry, one more. COVID-19 testing numbers last fall were consistently well above 300. Total tested per week, we're at February, we were shooting approximately 160 a week. Current test trends are approximately 100 or below per week. Last week, Governor Kelly announced that the state of Kansas pulls with two phase three and four of the Kansas COVID-19 vaccination plan. Finney County is continuing with a phased approach to distributing the city, or the COVID-19 vaccination to reduce wait times, enhance convenience and increase accessibility for residents. At this time, COVID-19 vaccinations are available to all populations. You'll see that here on this slide. We just opened these phases for these eligible populations this week. As of today, the mass vaccination clinic has given 10,380 COVID-19 vaccinations. Approximately 7,054 of those are total R, of that total R for doses. The state is currently calculating about 24% of Kansasans have received the vaccine thus far. We anticipate that our vaccination numbers continue to steadily increase as we receive additional doses from the state vaccinated individuals at the mass vaccination clinic. As more Kansasans are vaccinated, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment has released guidance regarding gatherings, isolation and quarantine, as well as travel for vaccinated Kansasans. When you're not in your private home to protect yourself and others, continue to follow all the public health measures. When you're in your private home, you may gather with other fully vaccinated people in small groups without masks or distancing. And you may gather with unvaccinated people, as long as the unvaccinated people are from a single household and are at low risk for developing severe disease. Vaccinated persons with exposure to someone with infected or confirmed COVID-19 are not required to quarantine if they are fully vaccinated, are within six months following receipt of the last dip in the series, and have remained asymptomatic since the current exposure. Finally, vaccinated persons are not required to quarantine post-travel if they are fully vaccinated and are within six months following receipt of the last dip in the series and have remained asymptomatic since the travel. The link to this guidance was also sent over to Dr. Carlin to share with the board members as well if you would like to accrue this information from K D H G a little more in depth. Of course, we are incredibly grateful for our county and community partners, thanks so much for your time this week. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Colleen? Mark?
So in, in those guidelines, it says you need to be complete with your vaccinations within the last six months. Does that mean that though there's a limit to the effectiveness of our vaccine? If we've had the shots?
So I think a lot of it is dependent upon clinical trial, by having enough time for this clinical trial to understand the timeline of that efficacy.
So we just don't know, in other words?
Pretty much, so originally it was three months, now they know six months out it's deemed effective. Pfizer is 95%, Moderna is 94, and then Johnson &amp; Johnson is 66. I think it was the time and as those clinical studies continue, we'll know more information about the timeline of that as we speak.
Any other questions? Thank you, Colleen, we really appreciate you giving us this information.
Yes, no problem, thank you.
I guess I can take this moment to thank Dr. Carlin from my office peeking in the back and asking me to be in person for the presentation because I got extra steps and I went, oh my gosh, there's a consent agenda and I took off and I thought, well, K J hasn't come out of her office yet, so I'm still okay, so. So I'm keeping my steps going today and working really hard at getting to that 10,000 steps up and down this hallway over here, so.
Now we need, need carpet.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that'll, that'll be part of it. So I'm gonna be talking about proposed changes to the plan, so I'm gonna go ahead and kind of start with some of that introduction kind of things. And we do have a fluid document, we're very grateful for that and very grateful for you listening to our presentations each month as we come across things that we think need to be changed. There we go. So, CDC recently came out with new guidance. So that prompted us to look at our plan a little bit. One of the things that they, they said is that there are two things that we need to prioritize. And I think part of this came out because now there's been push to reopen schools for many schools that have been closed. So CDC is kind of reemphasizing to me what they said is please, on the masks, universal wear piece of mask should be required. And then originally it said physical distancing should be continued. However, just in March 19th, they came out and said at least three foot and then they specified that's probably better for elementary and it's better for the older kids to stay further apart as much as possible. And then they also removed recommendations for physical barriers. So before, you know, they were saying we need to something to tone kids and teachers and now they're saying as long as you have a mask and you be your best associated distance, you don't need all of those physical barriers. So those were changes that have come out from the CDC. So, we'd like to talk to you a little bit about what we, we think we can do with that guidance. Talk when we talk to Colleen. Also, we had all of our committees go back to work and say, what do you think we need to do now with some new guidance? So, with some, definitely some input across the district. One of the things we'd like to do is reduce the new level 3.5 and just require masks for everybody at level three pre-K through 12. We're seeing that that is a move, so just put it right there with that level. So, this is the classroom chart for level three, some of the things that are in our plan. And the second bullet is masks are required for grades five through 12 or teacher discretion for pre-K four. We want to take that off and just change it to masks are required for pre-K 12 and then leave the backslash, get, step in washing before after lunch and after recess. So just that part before the, the backslash. So for level, yes, sir?
We hope you have a question.
We can go ahead and do that, that's okay.
So in that case with level three, we are, we're increasing the, the mask requirement, I guess you?
Correct. So for the operations level, so this is the offices, please, primarily. Again, 3.5 would go away, masks would be on. And then we would add, and this is also from the CDC site, I found this the other day when I was going over all of the possible changes. District personnel traveling to buildings will be limited to three sites daily if possible. Now the CDC says we can go to as many buildings as we want to as long as we sanitize our hands between buildings. So I'm like all about that building visit contest that, you know, leadership has, so I'm like totally on board with this. I figure I can take a, a good lead right now. All right. At level two, we want to add the point five back in here and there's a very definite reason for that. We do think that masks need be required for grades pre-K through 12 at 2.5, but we want to leave two there because guys, I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed and hope that maybe we can get there and be able to make that, those masks up to the teachers, which is what level two is one to say. And then we thought we could change some other level two languages for lunch and groups. And then continue the current level two language for masks, so I think Katie can go on. So the current level two, it says masks recommended for grades five through 12 or grades pre-K through 12 at teacher discretion. We would change, masks recommended for pre-K through 12 or at teacher discretion for 2.5, for two, and then 2.5 would be masks required. So just change that wording, so we still have that option again moving down to masks recommended. And then changing social distancing to being recommended to follow the new limits of from six to three. One of the things that came up when we talked to the select vision folks because we, we talked about staff that recommended changing the lunch schedules back and now that we can not worry about social distancing much, can the kids eat in the cafeteria? We just do our best with social distancing. So we put that in there, but then when we talked to select vision, they said, well, what about breakfast? Yeah, that makes sense because right now, most of our elementary kids are going to their homerooms and eating breakfast there. And if you let them go ahead and go back to breakfast in the cafeteria, then that gives the teachers just that few more minutes to get ready before the kids come in. So we tried to, and that was actually a teacher idea, the select vision, hearing this, or hearing a meeting that said, you know, this would help us a lot if we got those few minutes back in the morning to plan. So I added that in there. We capture the breakfast and lunch with social distancing if possible. The current language at level two says large group classes outside are socially distanced. We'd like to change that to large group classes socially distanced if possible. So again, we would let up on the lunch and the breakfast and the large group activities. We would have 2.5 with masks and two without, just a recommendation for that for teacher discretion. Well, that's the main choice, change in the language there. For, yes?
Sorry. Just a quick question, can you remind, I'm not giving a handover today. How many people we have on the select vision committee?
45?
And we have representation from around, all around the district, you have community members?
Yes. We have two board members, Jennifer and Mark, on there as well. So for the operations, so our offices, we'd gain 2.5 masks would be required and at level two, they would be recommended. Any questions on the classroom operations, how the changes that were recommended? So I-
Just, just a quick question, I'm sorry. 2.5, was something we created that last time?
We created 3.5.
2.5 we're creating this time?
Uh huh, yeah, and we're actually gonna just do away with 3.5.
So we're, because of the national recommendations, I mean, and others, but particularly because of the national recommendations, assuming that's why we are, why Finney County Health has the criteria that they have and therefore that's what they have as well.
Well, and it, it is partly CDC, that's why I put that on there. Because I think that's what a lot of people pay attention to. But there's also the county criteria, there's the state health department. There, and then we're gonna go through the different plans from each of the building levels. So there's been input from the teachers, there's been input from NEA. We talked about masks at some of their meetings, so there's been a lot of discussion on that.
And so your point is, it's not one thing driving it?
Not, not one thing driving it. And, and the other thing is, I don't know if Colleen is on here still and wants to jump back on, but one of the things that we've talked about with the health department is that quarantine if we get a positive student. So as long as the masks are on, we're not, we're really not quarantining a lot of kids. So the, the kids in that class get to stay there. If we take the masks off, then she's going to be doing, sending more kids home because of the direct exposure.
And to me, that's the biggest, uh-
Yeah, the guidance from, the guidance from K D H G is that we have to quarantine any child that would have been considered a close contact to another unmasked child if they are hot. So if we're endgame trying to keep children in the classrooms and in school, then masks are going to help us meet those So, if we're endgame trying to keep children in the classrooms and in schools, then masks are gonna be going to help us meet those goals for the rest of this year, especially when CDC, KDHE, um, World Health Organization are all recommending masks as one of the best, um, recommendations to help, um, decrease transmission within our schools and in our communities.
Okay.
Can I ask a question or work on what's done here? What, what marks-
Just one follow-up, I beg your pardon. But, um, we talked, we talked all along about the Swiss cheese sort of approach, slices of cheese, and various methods of trying to, uh, mitigate and block transmission. And it's, it's really come down to one of the keys, one of the keys and easiest practices is that layer that was the mask. And so it sounds like we're, we've heard information about lightening up on the social distancing side of it, as long as those masks were there. And, uh, so I, I appreciate you chiming back in, uh, on behalf of county health, and in particularly highlighting the, uh, the reason that we have in the classroom for the masks, being that if there's an outbreak, I mean, a, a positive test, uh, the whole class doesn't have to, uh, go home.
Right.
Okay, well, that, that helps me, thank you.
So, after discussing the changes in these levels, we asked the building committees to all go back to work and see if there was anything in their plans that would need to be changed if we just move on with this. And the early childhood group, the elementary group, the high school group and the middle school group all said they had no changes to their plans. Most, all of them, um, a couple of those committees said this was unanimous, we're fine with our plan where it is. So several of them brought up that they didn't want to, um, make a lot of changes with two months left in school. That the kids were used to this format for lunch, or they were used to this format for library or whatever, and we can make it work for two more months.
And that, that was a little confusing to me. So were they for these changes, the new changes? You know, you said they were for keeping it the same, they were unanimous in that, so were they wanting to keep the levels the same too? Or they were for these changes, that's what I was saying?
They're okay with these changes, but when it comes down to specific building practices, they didn't want to change what they were doing. So they felt like, it's one of those deals, kind of like, we can be more restrictive in areas than maybe what the state says. We have to do minimum what the state says, but we have, we can be more restrictive. Well, this is the same kind of thing. So these would be the outlines, these level two and three changes, that they can be more restrictive, and some of the buildings chose to keep that. So they chose to keep the same lunch schedules, they chose to keep the same seating arrangement in the classroom, those types of things.
So, so how did those committees, what was their input when they came back? Did you ask them about these changes? You said they were okay with it, but were they unanimous with it? Or were there some concerns? Were there some that felt like you could loosen up a little bit? Or was it unanimous, let's add this two point five and make level two more restrictive?
They didn't actually, I, I guess I'm not explaining it right. They actually didn't give any direct feedback on two or two point five. They said, let us, let us take what, what this is looking like. So we got, all got together and said, can we do that? How can we lighten up? Because we hear that, I mean, I, I heard the comments. So how can we lighten up some of the restrictions? So we all got together, all of the committee chairs got together, and we brainstormed what we could do with this classroom operational level and the, the office side of it.
So they weren't asked, sorry?
Yeah, yeah, and so these are what we came up with. So then they had to take it back to their building level and get their building committees together. And their building committees felt like they didn't necessarily want to change. So in some cases, you will see building plans that are more restrictive now. If this, if you pass this, you will see some building plans that are still more restrictive than what these are.
But were there any that were wanting to keep it the same, keep the less restrictive? Were there any that communicated that?
Oh, well, we've got a few changes, so I guess we'll get to see what those are, so-
Okay, I'm jumping ahead then.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think I understand now, I'm sorry. So yes, we did have the following changes recommended by some of the buildings. So, Amy Ritz, are you out there somewhere?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you wanna talk through your intermediate changes?
Yes, I will. Um, for the intermediate centers, we just, um, got together and talked about at levels two and three, the curriculum change we would like to make would be to reopen our libraries and let library hold classes in the library instead of having her go to homeroom to hold classes. And this way, the students would be in the library, they could see the tools and the things that she is featuring in her lessons, and then they would be there for checkout and be able to return to their classroom. And that was, uh, what we wanted to change for the curriculum. Um, level two and three, lunch routines, um, if you'll go ahead and go up next slide.
It's down the bottom. Amy, I think, lunch routines is down the bottom.
Oh, geez. Sorry, my child. Um, okay, um, there we go. So the students leave the cafeteria and stay physically distanced as much as possible, and, and we would like that instead of students going, um, to lunch and sitting with their homeroom. I'm sorry, I can't read this slide. Uh, and students will be able to go to lunch, they'll still sit with their homeroom classes, but then with the mixed in a group, but we would all be in the cafeteria and just be physically, uh, distanced as much as possible. And right now, um, what we've been doing, we have students eating in the hallway, we have students eating in the gymnasium. They were spread out quite a bit. And with the, uh, guidelines for food serving, in order to spread the students out like that, everything had to be individually wrapped or sealed. So that was putting extra work on our kitchen staff as well. So for us, it would be more beneficial for all the students to be in the cafeteria. Um, the actual program pretty much stays the same, we'll use outdoor space if possible, and that they are participating in small group activities and socially distancing more possible.
So the change here is actually the, the physical distancing and we're doing small group activities as much as possible. Is that it for you, Amy, and Kate?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah. So any questions for Amy?
I, yeah, Dana? Sorry, I didn't know, Alex was also, um, so I, when it comes to the seating, all it says is the seating chart. So I know in previous plans we had where they all had to face front. That's not the case anymore. They can sit in small groups again? Or is there some limitation to seating within the classroom?
So, we, go ahead, Amy.
Go ahead, Glenda. Well, I would just say that we, we have the, um, the seating, that we have seating charts, they may vary, they may change, um, you know, weekly. In the past, we had the seating charts, we made them, and then we said, uh, sorry, this is where you're gonna set for the next month or the next six weeks. And now with, um, the relaxation a little bit, we still have seating charts, but the kids could be moving, like, on a weekly basis so they could have different shoulder partners. And we would still have small groups, um, if possible, in the classroom at those times. Does that answer your question?
So, let me just make sure. I'll, uh, so, teachers do have the capacity to set students the way they want. They, they don't necessarily all have to be facing the front as there was in a plan. And I'm sorry, there's so many plans, like, I can't keep up. So I'm just making sure that teachers have the capacity to seat children in their small group. Cause I know some classrooms were set up in like four groups or, you know, two partners together. So teachers are able to do that now. They can set the children the way that they want to in their class, essentially. They just have to keep the seating chart.
I, I believe that in a-
Correct.
Yeah, the intermediate level, you've got tables and you are so far still keeping them all facing the same direction, because they can turn around and do the small groups or do shoulder partners at the tables. Is that my understanding?
Yes. Yes.
So-
And we also, we, I, seating on the floor, we, we put groups together and then they go to different spots in the classroom and sit on the floor. Um, because the kids like that movement as well, and they like to be able to, to get up and, and have a, a little change of, like, pace or beat.
So in the intermediate plan, they use tables, well, they use tables in the classroom. So they're asking that they still just keep those tables the same? And they can turn around and group them in like at one table? They can say, turn around and the four of you get together or work with your shoulder partner? Um, so they're not actually putting the tables up next to each other?
Correct.
If, if I understand that right, then a teacher does not have the option for clustering, uh, small groups.
Correct.
And that was something that the levels that we proposed would have allowed that. But when their intermediate group got together to determine how they wanted to put these relaxed pieces into place, that was a decision the intermediate committee made. And like Glenda said, they're used to it, they felt like the other things they were doing, but that was something they did not want to change, if I understand correctly.
And for example, the elementary, um, they are, some, some of them are clustered. Um, when you walk in, you'll see that, but they are still using the plexiglass and they're just going to keep that up. So they're gonna, even though we're saying, you know, we saw in CDC that we don't have to use those barriers, they'd rather keep them that way and use the plexiglass than, than go, go back.
I'm certainly not trying to second guess, but with this wonderful tool that we're perpetuating and in fact injecting into lower levels of our plan, which that being the mask, seems like, I mean, the question is, what are, what are the new liberties? And you've gone through a process to identify a few. I'm just working through my mind that teachers still don't have the liberty to structure their classroom as, as it works best for them. In other words, they're still held to things like everyone face the same direction. Right?
Or, or seating charts, um, and that depends on whether or not they have dividers and what their plan says. When I, I specifically asked some of the group chair people that didn't give any changes why that was, and they felt like the, the kids were in routines and they were being able to operate, so if they had the plexiglass and had them grouped, again, it's, it comes down to, we've got two more months. And rather than teach a whole new procedure here and then lose that time of instruction, let's not teach a new procedure, let's just write this out. Because right now, we're, we're using our time for curriculum and not teaching new procedures. So I think for our younger kids, they felt like that was more important.
And if my, if I may interject, the intermediate centers, as Ms. Lorva said, we do have tables, and they are rather large tables, two students, uh, per table. But at this point in time, if teachers were to say group two tables so that the students keep pushing together so the students are then facing each other across the table, if for some reason we were to have to change levels overnight, then that teacher's gonna have to go in and pull all of those tables and move them very quickly if, if it were to happen overnight. So we thought that it might be better to keep the plan as we had it, um, allowing that this allows the students, the teachers can turn them around, they can move chairs and, and things like that. It's not as strict as it sounds.
Yeah, yeah, we can still say, you two turn around, face the people behind you and, and work together.
And I know this sounds simple, but the plexiglass is there for just the kids to be able to see each other, for the most part. And besides the divider that's put there, but-
Yeah, and the scene guard, yeah.
So if they took the plexiglass away, those students would have to face all one direction and have to see each other.
Right, yeah.
So do all of our elementary kids have plexiglass? Or just the ones that are in groups that teachers wanted it that way?
Pretty much any, any classroom that has tables of any kind where students sit facing one another, all of those were, um, provided with plexi, like, plexiglass where we set those up where they have dividers and barriers between them. Um, if there were desk situations, most of those were all facing the same way and then they were spread apart. Um, there are some classrooms that do have plexiglass dividers, um, if the teacher requested it. Then it just kind of depend if they were able to socially distance them, some of the teachers didn't choose to request them.
But anybody that asked was-
Yes.
Asked and we shall receive. That's the case model.
Well, not all the time. But we must become our own.
So it's, the classroom is gonna depend upon the space and the furniture that's in that particular classroom.
Correct. We specifically made plexiglass dividers for each type of-
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah.
And so now, you brought up earlier that the CDC is saying we take those down, correct?
There, there's, there's saying they can.
As long as, there are people who are wearing masks and you have at least three feet of distance. So if we have two kids sitting side by side at a smaller table, it would still make sense to have the plexiglass divider. But like between Dr. Hannigan and I, it would not be necessary to have that because of the distance between us.
So it's recommended to, that you can take them down if you have group meter distance and a mask. Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Was, were the plexiglass mostly requested at the elementary levels or were there some of the-
It was actually all the way through. There were numerous classrooms at the high school level where they sit in table groups where we had to design, um, things like that. So it was at all levels.
Thanks.
Okay, activities, and I apologize to the high school folks who are at activities, so, um, Sotter and I, I believe. So I'm gonna do my best on this one, but, um, I will tell you, I got a text message from Mr. Marky just prior to board meeting starting, and he said, CASH has sent out their guidance, and he said, our plan matches exactly. He said, what we're presenting not matches CASH recommendations exactly. So, go through on that one. So, he had that crystal ball all working for him, so. All right, so at level one, masks recommended at outside events when unable to socially distance. Masks required at all indoor events. Level two, masks recommended at outside events when unable to socially distance. Masks required at indoor events with social distancing restrictions. Level three, masks recommended at outside events when unable to socially distance. Masks required at all indoor events. Capacity limitation at level three is fifty percent. And at level four, capacity limitation is up to thirty-five percent. And five and six, masks will be required at all activities inside or outside. Any questions on the activities?
I'm just curious what the change, are, is that less or more restrictive than their original levels, say, at level one and two?
Out, outdoor would be less because-
At level two?
Uh, we have right now, private with any patient at indoor or outdoor, masks are required.
Which is CASH recommendations, but what was our, I'm sorry, I wish I could remember at all, but what was our original plan for activities, I guess, at level two and three?
I would have to go back to check. I believe initially we did not require them outdoor. But I think one of the changes we brought to you was to, to be in compliance with the CASH recommendation. It was that we did require them, I think later in the fall at outdoor events. So I'd have to go back to double check to be sure I'm, I'm accurate. But basically, this isn't changing our indoor requirements at all.
Right.
Um, it's, and it's lessening the restriction on what we would have outdoors.
I couldn't remember how, how closely they were aligned with the activities were aligned with our general plan. So that's why, I guess I was trying to compare them? Does that make sense?
I know Drew tried really hard to keep up with the CASH guidance. And at one point when we met, he said, I think instead of actually spelling it out, I might just say whatever CASH says, kind of thing, and, and we'll match CASH. Um, but he, he opted to, uh, spell it out and actually ended up matching CASH, so.
And I think, if I'm thinking back, I think initially in the fall, CASH's guidelines were only for, like, the CASH actual event, like substates and states, playoff games, that kind of thing. But then they changed to any CASH activity. Um, and so we're, we are following their lead here and going to a little less restrictive environment.
I think that happened before the last two home games.
I'm glad we have lots of memories here, cause I can't remember them all, so.
I can really remember the classroom levels and the rest of them are kind of like, okay, I'll have to go look it up. All right, special education, and we do have some special ed folks on there. If you have questions, I told them I tried to review it. Josh is on the road, um, right now, so. They noticed some discrepancies at various levels, um, about hand washing maybe on there, maybe it isn't on there for all of the different programs. So they just wanted to make sure that that was across the board. So it really isn't a whole lot of change, it's just making it consistent, so for all programs, adding that hand washing piece. And then, and DIP that they've not already added, so. And then, and DIP added, if not already added, so they recognized that in some of the programs they have, they forgot that. Homebound at all levels, right now, they require two staff members to do a homebound. They were really thinking that that would be a help for services, so if a child needs OT and speech, they can go together and get it all done together while working out the schedules of all of our DTs, OT speeches and making them pull aside to get two of them at every home that needed it was extremely difficult. So they're, they're actually moving that line. So level two, self-contained, add a seat guard for all face-to-face learning and clean hands-on materials after each child. And OT and APE want to add no community outings, that's something they determined early on and they wish to continue that if we go to a lower level. Any questions? Yes.
Am I just throwing in, I think I found maybe the original, prior to any changes with activities, I'm not swearing to it, but even in the very beginning plan, we didn't designate a difference between indoor and outdoor, so level two, mask were recommended. We just had a broad statement there. Again, I think this is the very original plan where we started prior to changes, prior to talking about aligning with CAEIA. And then level three was mask and temperature checks were required at all indoor events. So at that point, we didn't designate a difference.
Thanks, Heath.
Mark?
Just for clarification, this is the plan, so this plan goes forward into the summer as we have it till we change it. Correct?
So we believe this plan was for the 2020-2021 school year. So we see this getting us through this school year, the summer activities in June that would be associated with this school year, and then something, something would have to be done, we think, for next year in terms of what things would look like for next year. So I don't think this is in perpetuity. So something would come back, it might look somewhat similar. But kind of like with all of this, you know, five months ago in November, we certainly had no idea that the spring would look like this, thank goodness it does. But five months from now, when we're looking at the beginning of school, you know, we don't know 100% yet what to expect. So we look at this as a, this was specifically a response plan for the 2020-21 school year.
And the only other question I follow up on, and just to emphasize, I guess, is that there is a strong element in the UST 405 staff thinking process about, we always talk about transitions for kids. And apparently, that applies to the classroom and the remainder of this school year, that lessening where we can, but keeping things consistent so that we don't bounce back and forth in the classroom even, in regards to continuing masks and structuring the classroom seating. Absolutely.
And Madam President, it's okay, I'm, first, I'd like to thank the public speakers that came tonight for them taking time to share information and their perspective with the board. Mrs. Smith reached out to me yesterday afternoon, and I happened to be out of the office yesterday afternoon, so she and I didn't, weren't able to make connections when I tried to reach out to her this morning, we played phone tag, so. But certainly, I appreciate her reaching out to me also to try to gather information about what's going on. One of the themes that I think several of the speakers mentioned was this idea that we're stuck at level 3.5, and I would wholeheartedly agree with that. You know, our process all along, and we've shared this from the beginning, has been we're gonna try to base our decisions on the best information possible, including our local data and evidence as we have moved through this. Our gating criteria, I think I have tried to make the point that it's not an absolute, it doesn't give us an absolute answer, it is something that informs our decision along with other information that we provide or that we're provided. And since our numbers have improved dramatically, we have, let me back up, so the other information besides those indicators that are in our gating criteria, we looked at several school-specific things, our student attendance, our number of positive students, our staff attendance, our number of positive staff substitute fill rates, how many of our schools are at green, yellow, and red, and there's a lot of different pieces we looked at. But the third tier to this is we really looked at the guidance that's coming from our local, our state, and the national experts in this area. And so, thank goodness, our numbers have been amazing since we returned in January, really, middle to the end of January, and numbers started showing improvement. And I believe we've had a period where we went four weeks where we only had one positive staff member. Very, very good, very good news. But during that time, we also were hearing the advice from our local and state health officials saying masks are critically important. Please keep taking these steps. We think that that is very powerful in helping prevent the spread, and we don't want it going again in our community. So it is a balance between all that. There's certainly no agenda here to keep anything secret, and I would certainly share that information with anyone who, you know, reaches out to me for specifics about what we're doing. But it's a balance of these factors, just like we make decisions. Unfortunately, we don't know enough about this to be able to develop a formula or a system that we think is gonna let us fill in certain boxes and things spit out the exact decision. Level 3.5, anything below that takes away universal mask, mask wearing in our schools. The point in, or the purpose in some of this is the advice we've had is to relax some of the other restrictions, but continue to be able to have a universal mask requirement while we're relaxing those restrictions. So in effect, that's what the plan that we're sharing with you tonight would do. It would allow us to relax other restrictions, but continue with the universal mask requirement. As Gwenda said, there is a level, level two, and we all hope that possibly by the end of the school year, maybe we could have masks at an optional level. So that opportunity still exists in this plan, but it will let us kind of step down to that. Certainly, most of the people that spoke tonight would favor that masks go away sooner rather than later. But again, the advice that our local people have been giving us, the state has been providing, and then it was kind of supported by the new CDC recommendations in late February, and again, last Friday, is that masks are important in their view in order to keep the spread down and keep our kids in school. All of this has been done under that goal of keeping our kids in school face-to-face as normally as possible while taking reasonable steps to protect the safety of our students and our staff. So I think that's kind of the other piece. You know, I think one of the speakers described that you have provided me with the authority to make that decision in a weekly meeting with the Health Department. We have been doing those meetings every week, we have been reviewing this information, and unless you would like to change that process, we intend to keep moving forward with that and balancing those things, our community data and experience, our school data and experience, and the advice and guidance from the local, state, and national experts in this area. So. Questions?
Did you ever, I'd asked about this in December, did you ever invite or request any COMPASS or any mental health professionals to join you on those weekly meetings, or did you stay strictly with the Health Department?
It's the Health Department and the school leaders from UST 363 and the two private Catholic schools. We do not have a COMPASS representative on there.
Just quick clarification, I thought you said everything below 3, not universal mask.
But adding 2.5 is everything that, so 2 is not universal mask, 2 is staff member, teacher choice. 2.5 is everything like 2, but requires universal masks. So it would allow us to step down to level 2 and try lessening those other restrictions, but not giving up the masks, and then level 2 would take us to the same level with no masks.
What's the other district you said that was on there?
Holcomb.
So have you talked to districts in the area or looked into see what they are doing at this point? I know everyone's plans are different, and some were never out of class or some started later, but have you looked at area schools and considered what they are doing or compared it?
We meet weekly with Holcomb, so we know what they're doing. But as far as other districts, we haven't spent much time, and it's kind of a sorgus for, you know, once in a while, we'll compare notes, but we don't do that on a regular basis.
I did learn today that Holcomb is going to optional masks starting next week.
And that's what we learned today in our meeting, is that their level 2 is mask optional.
And were they going down to level 1? That was my understanding.
That's not what they told us. I don't want to speak for Holcomb, but...
No, I may misspoke.
That's not what was discussed.
But level 2 is what, for their mask requirement.
So even though you need without proof, you don't come to a unanimous decision, obviously. Like each entity does whatever they feel is best suited for their students.
Correct. And there's, you know, there's things to consider. Their numbers are a little different than ours, their size is different, you know, their teacher group may have a different opinion about things, and they, you know, they may have other things in their plan that makes sense for them to hold the line on or to relax on. So our plans are not identical, their level 2 doesn't look exactly like our level 2.
And then, Dr. Parker, if I may say something too, from Dr. Scott Myers this morning, from my understanding of what he was talking about with his level 2, is masks are optional if social distancing cannot be maintained.
So, thank you, so it's not just masks are optional. If they can't, if they're in a situation where they can't do social distancing, then they will require masks.
So it was brought up earlier that we did work with the teachers, and the teacher group, did we survey teachers to see where they lie in terms of masks or no masks? Because it seems like with this plan, I mean, it's essential that we want to keep masks. So I'm just wondering if any kind of survey was done with the teachers to see...
So we did not survey all teachers. I think the GCA did a survey back in December of teachers, but I did two things, I did two kind of informal polls. You know, certainly, this is an issue that there's lots of opinions on, and we recognize there's opinions on all sides. But I don't want to, at least my approach to this is not, this is a majority decision or a decision of what's most popular. But I did, at two of our board faculty meetings, I did just kind of poll the groups that participated in those faculty meetings, two different elementary schools. One elementary school, it was two-thirds to a third that favored continuing with masks if necessary through the end of the year, and the other building was about 50/50. We also talked to the GCA executive leadership team to get feedback from them, and Mr. Pari is here tonight, but their strong recommendation was that we continue to take the steps that we've been taking with masks in order to protect teachers. And Mr. Pari, is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
And then, and then lastly, I think Mr. Nordby reported back to us that when he assembled his team to look at the ability to make adaptations, his leadership group, which is a fairly large group of 12 or 15 teachers at the high school, department leader types, that they were unanimous, that they wanted us to continue to do, use masks as a mitigation strategy. That was reported in Gwenda.
We also had an elementary building that reported back to me when we first started opening it up to, okay, take this back to your committees and think about what we can do different. And one of the principals emailed me back and said, our teachers are noticing that they didn't get the flu this year, they didn't get the COVID that was going around, they don't have, you know, the diseases that they have to worry about, those kinds of things. So that particular building was like, maybe even if COVID goes away, when it's winter time, maybe we should wear the masks. So they did see a positive side to wearing the masks.
And they not have heard from some individual teachers who, you know, don't like the idea of wearing masks. I mean, there are definitely, there's definitely people on both sides of this.
And then this did go through the select committee, correct? And how many were present for this class presentation?
Yeah, you were on there at Mark, I want to say there was, there probably wasn't a full group, 15 to 20 maybe, because I think we had four across and four down.
You can estimate, it's okay, I'm not gonna...
Yeah, so I'm trying, is that right, four across, four down, probably?
Yeah, I don't know that we had two screens, so I...
Yeah, so we, as, with the select committee, we took each section and voted on them separately. So on the first one, with the classroom plan and the operation plan, there was only one vote against, and everybody else was for, and the rest of the plans, the school plans and the athletic plans, it was unanimous.
There were questions?
Yes, yes, definitely there were questions.
So I appreciate this, this questioning by those, there were parents as well as teachers, and so they're thinking through it, and I really appreciate it.
Well, and that's where we got the what about breakfast comment, was it a select vision from a teacher, so that input is really important. Completely saw a different side that we hadn't thought about.
Yeah, you talk about science, bad science, no question. So I appreciate the questions.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Gwenda or Mark?
Yeah, just curious, so how many of the teachers have had a first round of vaccinations or the full vaccinations? Do you know the percentage?
Heath does, I think. Heath, can I put you on the spot?
Yes, ma'am, was the question how many teachers had both rounds of vaccination?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the numbers that we got on the first round of vaccination was 570. Our staff members chose to do the first round. If you'll recall, our second round of vaccination happened on Thursday and Friday of spring break, and I think the numbers, we don't have an official number, but talking with Colleen and through our nurse, Director Michelle Choal, we think we're in the neighborhood of 500 that went and received their second vaccination. There were some things like they were gonna be out of town, they already had plans, and so we still are open, as Colleen mentioned earlier, any of those previous people who had received round one, they're still open to go and get round two, they just have to make separate arrangements outside of that two-day block that we scheduled.
And you do have several that are still coming in for second doses currently, and several that are now enrolling for first doses. So it should be higher than that overall, but definitely that 570 mark for first doses that Heath explained from that first. And then, it's just a little bit more difficult to track it after that first day, because I can't pull out of my medical record how many specifically are UST 4574s.
And that would be a little under 50%, with about 1285.
But everyone was offered the opportunity?
Everybody was offered the opportunity. 1285 again? But it's 500 out of 1285, so it'd be a little under 50%. That it's five hundred out of twelve eighty five, so it'd be a little under fifty percent.
And, and isn't it possible they could have gotten vaccinated someplace else?
Correct.
Their own time.
Yeah, and like I said, there's other seventy will probably trickle in at some point.
Because I have some colleagues in other counties that happen to be in town. And so they were allowed to get a vaccination here as opposed to someplace else. So there's a, you know, and I'd frankly, I'd be a little concerned if we, because there's a certain element of privacy on, on health matters as well. If we were tracking things too closely. But it doesn't sound like that's an issue at all, so.
The, the nice, the nice part about working for, for the school district here is you're exactly right. Teachers and staff members that live in other communities could still get their vaccination as part of the school district. So myself, for example, I signed up here and I signed up in Lakin because I'm a resident of Lakin, so I signed up in Kearney County. Well, Kearney County called me first, so I'm not in those numbers, but I had both of my shots.
And just to be clear, obviously it's not just, we're not talking just teachers, that's all. So we don't have a way to break down. Teacher, huge amount of exposure, eight or nine thousand people that we have in our district.
Another factor too, if you had to live like anytime during Christmas or February, like you have to wait any days, I believe, is it ninety? So is that right? I don't want to say wrong numbers, but there's like a waiting period.
The, the state standard is ninety days. Here on local level, we're looking at essentially sixty days. It's not that it's necessarily contraindicated due to efficacy or antibodies or you'll get sick. The state released that as a way to prioritize individuals that have zero antibodies or zero pin protection versus someone that has at least some because they were in front of policies of COVID.
So there's a lot of factors. Any other questions?
So we are asking the board to consider taking action on this tonight. That would allow us some flexibility going forward. The other two I am sure we're going to talk about tonight, we won't ask for action tonight. But this one, if you're willing to, by the way, we wait until April twelfth to be able to change.
And we would be voting on it separately like we did in the committee? I know I'm looking at you because you know how it was done. Or will it be all?
Depends on how motions are made.
Oh man, President, I note that the recommendation for level two point five and the guidelines as such, be adopted as written.
So the entire plan?
The entire plan. Second, the entire plan.
So there's a motion and a second, so that's how it's at least at this point. Dr. Hanigan, do you want to start with the discussion since it's your motion?
When I refrain from preparing remarks in an effort to listen, keep my mind open. I find my stress level to be extraordinarily high because I don't have remarks prepared. And I have suffered personally in the community because of things that I've said that have been emotional for others. What I find is an incredible amount of puzzlement. And in my thirty fifth year of wearing a mask, this mask is not to protect me when I'm in my office, it's to protect my patients. The idea that the mask creates a breathing situation that's detrimental to my, to my health, to my thought process, to my longevity. I find an incredible puzzlement of that. I wonder if those who chafe at the idea that we mandate masks for their kids would want a surgeon performing surgery on their kids without a mask? If they would want to be in an environment where a healthcare practitioner was not required by a separate entity to provide a safe environment for the people who come through their door. I wear the mask because it's the right thing to do, but I also wear the mask because a third party entity has told me that as part of the privilege of providing care, I need to protect the people who are in my office. And although the mask is uncomfortable, it is not my choice. It is part of my privilege. I find puzzlement in the idea that the health, the school district is not in, is, is, does not have the responsibility for protecting or making decisions related to the health of the kids who come through the door. Is it not the case that their education and their health are intertwined? And is it not the case that the health of a teacher dramatically affects their ability to educate the kids who come through the door? The masks that the kids wear are not for the kids, they are for the teachers. We have less than fifty percent of the teachers vaccinated. If we cannot prevent a child from transmitting the virus to a teacher, that teacher, once infected, his absence in school can, does not have a suitable qualified quality replacement. Have we not then affected the education of all of the students in that class? We are a governing body here, tasked with making decisions related to the quality of the education for all. If that then puts us in a position to make decisions related to public health, it is uncomfortable. It is frustrating. And it does fall within what we are tasked to do. I particularly find puzzlement in the idea that somehow we as board members want to control these kids, that we want to be in a position to have to make these decisions, that we ignore the seeking of what's right. I try not to be offended by that. Guess the mark to not be offended by the notion that I don't seek information or seek science. Find it very frustrating. But that's beside the point, that's, that's a personal thing. I do though, as an aside, again, say that this has cost me patients personally. It's cost me goodwill. It's cost me mental anguish. And I'm not unique in that. My board members share that. The easy thing to do would be to give. Give then. Just, just, just remove the mask, just give then. I don't really particularly have political aspirations, but it should be a lot easier. Too late, Mark. I made the motion, didn't I? Get out of the way, extra time.
Thank you.
Jennifer? I can't keep my mind straight, so I wrote them down and hoping they will make sense. As a board, we approved a COVID plan with distinct levels and gating criteria created by the staff and recommended by our administration. And upon that approval, we were asked to support and trust Dr. Carlin with the authority to set levels based on the information provided by the Finning County Health Department. Looking at the county numbers and weekly levels of the district, we are no longer following this plan based on the guidelines set, while continuing to keep our children restricted in masks and from normal activities in room. Teachers are burnt out. I've talked to several, several face to face and through email. And expecting them to oversee the physical health of their students to this extreme is not part of their job description. We're no longer in a pandemic and the fear needs to stop. It is time to let teachers get back to teaching and loving our kids. You're creating a precedence where education facilitates. Facilities are responsible for the health care of all students. You do not have the right to take that away from parents, nor do I. And schools are not their guardians, nor should they be. Have you asked teachers how they're doing? I have gotten the impression that, that committees were simply set up and they were told that we would be changing the plan to require masks no matter the COVID numbers, even before the select committee met on Tuesday and even before we heard this plan at our board meeting. As a select committee member, I was told these committees came back with a hundred percent agreement to add this level two point five, which I may have misunderstood after your explanation, but that's what I took away from the meeting. I was going through draft through at the time too, so forgive me for that. And I know for a fact from several reliable sources that this isn't true, that there were concerns at various levels from administration and higher level staff there, that they are ready to make this optional and not required. And this has weakened my trust for the information coming to me from the health team that meets weekly. We were lectured for months about how we are at risk of killing our teachers, grandmas, grandpas and caregivers if we kept our kids in school. And then we were forced to put them online before Christmas. And all the while, your county health director, Dr. Burns, was sending her kids to a local private school that never shut down and they're face to face program. Different situations maybe, but that's where my trust was lost. And this was never brought to the attention of the board. It was swept under the rug and I was approached by a caring community member with this information in concern. I personally am not sure if the administration works for the Board of Education or if the Board of Education is an employee of the administration. When I chose to run and was elected to this board, it was to stand up for our kids, teachers and community members of Finning County, not to blindly serve the requests and directives of the administration. However, if we even question a recommendation or critique a decision, we are accused of micromanaging or not properly behaving as a board member. Keep in mind, the CDC is not law, but simply recommendations. And in the beginning, even Dr. Fauci told people masks were not necessary and that children under the age of twelve were not likely to spread the virus. But it was quickly retracted when it didn't fit the political science. No, I don't trust either of these entities, so I went out and I put my time in. Unlike the assumption of many, I do not get my information from Facebook. I seek out input or I'm approached by local medical professionals, nurses, teachers and community members. I intently listen and ask questions whether we have the same or different beliefs on the situation. I have found much of, I have found much of the information in the media does not align with what was really happening in our communities. For example, talking about the flu, flu numbers, that we had almost zero. I spoke to nurses directly who give, who were working with patients and a COVID test would be given if there were flu like symptoms or COVID symptoms, but there was never a follow up for a flu test. And that may be the patient who didn't go because they have to go to a different clinic to get that flu test, but there, that's where the numbers can be skewed. Those flu tests simply weren't given, even though there may have been symptoms there. I'm constantly out in the community observing and interacting with people to find the truth. If you can't stand up as a leader for our kids and teachers by taking responsibility for the actions and consequences of our policies, perhaps we need to find someone who can. And as you know, I'm not a fan of masks, I'm not able to wear one, and perhaps that's why I'm such an advocate against them. And if you would like me to restate all the scientific data and research I have done, which I've had since the fall, out there stating masks are not necessary and may even hinder immunity, I will. Including, including the CDC's conclusion on masks. They, after their study, they, they stated that it may have a one point three percent difference in decreasing the spread of COVID. And that it ha, it may have the potential to slow the spread of COVID. But I, I'm not here really to vow the mask argument anymore. This is a policy issue. Follow the policy we proposed and we approved. Stop moving the goalposts. According to the community numbers, we should have been at a level where restrictions were minimal and masks optional for over a month now. I'm not in favor of this change. I recommend we follow the policy and guidelines set in place or get rid of them altogether. It's time to make masks optional for students and staff. And I did note earlier that I learned today that Holcomb was going to be at a level where masks were optional next week. And St. Mary's sent out an email to parents today that they'll be going to level one, which is my understanding that masks will be optional there unless I misunderstood. So, and I also just, I'm not convinced a hundred percent that masks have made the all or nothing difference. There are too many inconsistencies with the rules and how they're applied. Athletes can wrestle and play basketball face to face, but choir has to perform with their concert, perform their concert covering their faces where the music's actually coming from. Elementary kids can have recess and PE, but have to wear masks sitting at their social distance desks. I just feel like it's time to stop blindly following the bias in the political science and expand our vision a little bit and look at some of the other science out there and look at what's happening in our community and like in our schools. There's not hotspots occurring at these sporting events or in, in PE. So why do we feel like that would happen in our classrooms or sitting at lunch? They're going to be able to sit at lunch and not be a social distance without masks on. And so I just, there's two sides of this. There's my belief that masks aren't all or nothing. I think people should be able to wear them if they choose, just like people should be able to get vaccinated if they want. But we really need to think about why are we making policies that we're just going to keep changing the rules? So I'm, I'm not going to be able to vote for this.
Dana?
Essentially, I hear what Jennifer is saying and I've had a discussion with Dr. Carlin because this was brought up at least a meeting or so ago where our, our changes were not following the policy that was set in place. And some of the presentations tonight, the way they express that, that perceiving criteria, we're not going by it, here's the, the numbers, they're low. And that those numbers have been given to us weekly as board and also at every meeting. And so for a community member to say, you're not going by what you said you're going to, that makes sense to me. Because when they're fed the numbers and we're fed the numbers, we are thinking that, that is weighing heavily on the decision that is being made. I don't have a problem that if that is true, because I truly believe that our administration, whether it's Dr. Carlin or the principals, they are acting in the best interest of our teachers and our students. But that needs to be communicated. If we are now giving more emphasis to the WHO, is that how he says? That it's even coming down as high as that, or the CDC or KDHE? If we're now giving more emphasis to what's being recommended than those community numbers, which I have been led to feel are a great indicator of why we are at a certain level, then that just needs to be communicated. So I feel disappointed in the communication. I think we could have done and should have done a better job of communicating. But I do feel, like I said, that we are trying to create the safest work environment for our teachers, for our staff, and a good learning environment. And you know, what, the decisions that we have made, we might learn, oh, that was all a big mistake. But I would rather err on the side of safety and precaution than have regrets in the future. Because honestly, I mean, I hear so many different messages from doctors and, I mean, you'll have one doctor say this and, you know, another doctor say something different. The data that you pull up, it's, it could be reliable data. The data that you pull up, it's, it could be reliable data. Everything is questionable right now. But I do feel like in the end, we are trying to create the safest working environment for our teachers and the safest learning environment. And I trust our administration that that is the best, that is what they're trying to do in the end as well. So, I hope in the future, if ever we have something similar, we are better communicators because I understand why the community feels frustrated. I feel frustrated as a board when I can't give a clear answer as to how the decision is being made at this point. That's problematic. So, I would like to see improvement, but this thing is, is, we knew from the very beginning that it was going to have to be fluid, it was going to have to evolve and change. And I think that we have done that, but maybe not communicated as well as we can. I appreciate all your work that's gone into this over the entire school year.
Thank you, Dana. It's, it's such a tough issue because there are so many people that have extremely strong feelings about it. There's nobody that says, I really love wearing a mask. And you have Dr. Hanigan who's done this for his livelihood for years and relied upon that to protect his patients. You have some people that say that it doesn't matter. CDC has changed its recommendations along the line, but I also feel like that's as they've discovered more about the virus, that's evolved and that's changed. And our change, our plan has to change as well. I don't honestly know how I feel about wearing a mask. I can't say that I love it, but I also truly believe that our staff and administration are doing the best, our teachers, and everybody across the board is doing the best that they can to keep people as safe as possible. It's an unprecedented year. I mean, we don't have this type of situation that happens every year. It's kind of been, you know, we've talked about the, we're building the plane as we fly it, and we're still doing that because things are changing in our community and across the nation. Like Dana said, I agree, if I'm going to make a mistake, I'd rather make it on the side of safety. And if that means wearing masks to keep kids and our staff safe, then I think that's where we should go. You know, it's, you know, I've heard some concerns about not having enough people involved in those things. You know, we have a select committee that has people from all over, all different areas that are represented, building committees, committee chairs get together, there's the, there's the meetings that happen each week with the different schools. We're not all going to agree on this issue all the time, but I know there's been an incredible amount of work from a lot of people who have come into this, and I feel confident in following that, to follow that through the rest of the year, wherever we need to go, based on what the recommendation is. I feel very much like, you know, I've heard that CDC is not science. It is. I firmly believe that. And you can find information all over the board, but my gut instinct on this one is to stick with the masks. I agree that we should go with this one. Mark?
Well, I don't, I don't have a lot to, to say, except that I firmly enjoy this community. I have great affection for the members of the community, and I take all their comments very seriously. I have great affection and confidence in this board. As each of these members here, I think we have the ability to hire and fire whoever we want to, as far as superintendent, do that job, and in my opinion, so far, so good. So, this, this idea of somehow blindly, you know, weight pushing our job to someone else, I don't see anybody on this board that has done that. And this is just one of those things that's not an easy issue. But I have very confidence in our staff and the process and the dialogue. And I think the comments we heard tonight regarding masks is an example of, of how community members stay engaged too, which, you know, one of the worst things that can happen if we never hear anything from anybody out there. I applaud their efforts as well. I'm looking forward to the day when we don't have masks. I feel like we have the power to do that tonight. I don't think that's wisdom. I appreciate the comment, wisdom should prevail over fear. So, I support and recognize.
Mark? Um, most everybody knows that, I live with a nurse, so her opinion is pretty biased on wearing a mask, and, and I appreciate that she wears a mask at work and not bring it home, anything else, COVID, anything else. She's required to do that. In my line of work and in multiple facilities that I have to work in, I have to wear masks. Do I like it? Sometimes, no. Sometimes, yes. But I will do it to keep me and my employees going, that bill's paid. I appreciate all the hard work, all your hard, that everybody's done with all the information, with all the COVID plan that we put together, but everybody gets this information. The teachers get this information, the staff gets this information, the community gets this information, and it's up to each and every individual to dive through the information, make their own opinion, and move forward. But at the same time, we have to do it for the health of our staff and our students and our community. I do not want to make a medical decision for any child, nor will I, but for the health, overall health of our staff, I think it's a good decision to keep masks on. This, this plan has been fluid. It has, ever since we indoctrinated it, we've changed it, we've moved it around, but as far as moving goalposts, I, I don't think that's the case. I'm not part of any secret society. I can, I can take the information that I hear and I make my best decision on it, and I also take some of the recommendations that are provided by the GCA, by Dr. Carlin, by Glenda, by everybody, and to make my own decision, but at the same time, I'm making a decision for the health of our staff, our community, our students, everybody involved. Our people, 8,000 people in our district, besides students, staff, over 8,000 to 8,900, have a tremendous amount of exposure within our own little community, our district community, not just the outside community, but we are all gathering around, people going to different places, activities, events, just school classes, and taking that out to the community and then bringing it back. I, I agree with Dr. Hanigan when he says, my mask, but your mask is not to protect me, my mask is to protect you. I am exposed to a lot of different people dating, every day, once a month, once a week. I go to different places. I go to different states for my work. I wear a mask to protect them and to bring it back to protect my family, so I don't get exposed by somebody else, whether they wear the mask or not. But the information that I get, I'm sorry, I'm kind of all over the place, but all the information I get, all the articles that people send me, some of the articles I read are from left-wing people, right-wing people. To me, this is not a political landscape. I, I, I could care less about the politics as far as it pertains to our district. I'm, I do this for free. I don't get paid, none of us get paid. We do this because we care about our staff, we care about our community, we care about our kids. I have no dog in this fight, except for my community. That's it. So, I take that information and I call Dr. Carlin, I'll talk to a doctor friend of mine, I'll talk to my wife, he works at the clinic every day, and ask her what's coming up, what's going on, how's it look? I can look at the Finney County website, I can look at the KDHE information, and I can make that decision for me. I am not persuaded easily by anybody except for the information that I can read. So, for that, my full support of the mask. Till the end of the school. Now, in a month, if something changes and everything looks great, then let's look at and talk about that. I do not want it to affect prom, graduation, or any other activity that's going to come up that's going to have a tremendous amount of people in that same space. I don't want to wear a mask anymore, but I will to keep moving forward and keep face to face. So, thank you, Dana.
Yeah. As a lawyer, I'm supposed to research as part of my job, and I listen and read all the articles and review them that are sent to me, it's, and I'm listening to everything that everyone is saying. I really appreciate the emails and the comments that are, are given to me. I, I do want to be clear that aside from the time that we were in level six in December, USC 457 has been open. So, I was asked the other day, when are you guys going to open up? We're open. We've been open. And I don't think our goalposts have moved. Our goalpost and our target has been in-person learning for those kids who have signed up for in-person learning this entire school year as much as possible. And if level 2.5 can help us keep that happening, and like Alex said, prom happening, which didn't happen last year, give us a graduation, timely, not in the middle of the summer, so our seniors can really enjoy their senior year and those senior activities, and we can keep moving forward. That's what I want to do. I want to keep schools completely open as much as possible so our kids can learn. You know, dealing with some of the kids in the community the way that I do, I see, in my job, I see how level five and six impacted them. And, you know, now I'm trying to kind of pick up some of the pieces as well and see what we can do to help those families. I don't want to be back there. I want to keep things open. And from the research that I have done, and I'm not just going off Ms. Dries or Dr. Burns, but I believe we've also had comment from Dr. Swaddy and Dr. Dunford sent into the board. We've had comments from Dr. Mosher when he spoke with Mr. Tone for the activities. I think he also spoke with Dr. Strandmark. And then I've also read studies from other doctors as well. I'm not just taking part-blank what Finney County Health Department is saying, but everything that I'm reading is supporting what they are saying. And based off of that and looking at everything, it just seems to make the most sense to me at this point. Hopefully, we can get beyond this. I still do believe that there is a pandemic. I mean, I think that's why we have the NCAA tournament going on the way that we have it going on. So, you know, I just think that that's kind of where we're at at this point. So, I guess we have a motion on the floor, so.
Can I ask a question?
Ask a question?
Yeah. Well, I guess, I'm wondering what the end game is here, since we're not relying on the numbers, and if we don't have an end game, why don't we just put this into place permanently so we're not keeping the public in, out of minimum? Did I ask that correctly? I mean, if we don't have an end game to this, because it's not based on the numbers, and it may continue on to next year, then why don't we just put this in place permanently and just require masks if we're not, if that's the plan, so the public doesn't keep questioning?
Dr. Carlin said that this was just this school year's plan.
Into June, and then we'll look at something then. So, what has to change was the question. Potentially, we had an end game in levels based on the numbers, but now that's not the case.
Do you think that when the teachers had vaccination rates less than 50%, that...
Well, that's not, that's not in our plan. We don't have those numbers, so I don't know. I'm asking.
I think there were several, and I'm not arguing at all.
And I'm not trying to argue.
No, I know you, I know you. From what I understand, the communication is that there's several gating criteria, not just the numbers. There's several gating criteria. We've actually had a ton of teachers and committees and faculties from different schools. The way I understand, that some unanimously voted for this and some passed it by a two-thirds vote. So, that's a lot of my, based on my decision to say, yes, I want to accept this and move forward, is based on that criteria, that gating criteria. And even the select committee, people for the E2, sit on, out of 25 community, teachers, staff that's on that, moving forward, they're also voting to mask. The end game is 2021. As far as I'm concerned, June 30th is our fiscal?
Right.
And that's the end of the school year, or is it May 31st into our school year?
June 30th.
June 30th. And then I hope we come back and revisit this. I really do. I hope we can come back and revisit it May 31st. I just don't know.
But what's, what's going to get us there?
Jennifer, me, the end game is, is keeping kids in school face to face.
As normal as possible.
As normal as possible, all taking reasonable steps to keep everybody safe. And, and the face to face, that is, is, in my mind, that is the end game. When we put this plan together, we had no idea when a vaccine was going to be available, if it was going to be available. That's an example of something that has, that is influencing the conversations that we're having, but I, I recognize that people want to know, what's the number? We want to, what's the exact number that we're going to? I don't think, I don't, I don't know an exact number. It's a combination of all these factors, and I would respectfully disagree. I don't think we, I don't think the board has approved the gating criteria. It was never given to you to approve. And it was done that way intentionally because the gating criteria was developed by the Finney County Health Department in consultation with the school districts. And from the very beginning, ours has looked different than what the gating criteria that was released by KSDE looked like. And it was customized based on the expertise of the professionals that the Finney County Health Department consulted and worked with, and it was different than what some of the requirements were. And I have said from the very beginning that it is not an algorithm or something we put numbers in and it spits out an automatic answer. At a board meeting, I believe I have pointed out that that is one piece of information that informs our decision. And that is student attendance, our sub-fill rates, how low in red levels, and how many classrooms in yellow and red. The end game is the balance between the, the impact that wearing masks has with the benefit of keeping kids in school face to face. And so, as, as we talked about earlier, this plan hopefully takes us through the end of our year this year, and then by the time we get to summer, we're going to know more. And, and we probably will have to develop some kind of plan for the future. Hopefully, it's not going to need to be as restrictive as what we've had to do this year, but my end game is keeping kids in school face to face and, and with it as, as normally as possible. And, and it's done through looking at community numbers, school numbers, and the expertise, because my doctor is not like Dr. Burns. The medical professionals are the experts on the virus end of this. And so, it's utilizing those resources, local, state, and at the national level to help inform our decisions.
I appreciate the dialogue here. This is dialogue that's sort of outside of motion, which again, is not approving the gating criteria, it's, it's approving the tweaks to the strategy. And so, I call for the question.
Well, I consider it any kind of, any kind of, like even end-of-school boundaries with this thing. I mean, I don't think there should be really any absolutes, because from that defies what we're saying here, is that this is fluid and that changes could be made or need to be made at any time. be made or need to be made at any time. If we need to have board meeting to make adjustments again, then we should. This is we do not know. And I feel like a month trend is not enough for me to feel I know the numbers have been low for at least a month, maybe longer, but that's not long enough trend for me to say, okay, we're in the clear. So, hey, if we have long-term trends, then that's obviously an effective decision. But to say this is the end until the end of this school year, I think even that is is something that we really shouldn't be verbalizing because for me, this isn't the end. If something comes up that substantially, you know, influences this whole train, then we need to look at that and come back together and see if we can make changes again.
And Dana, I totally agree, and I'm sorry if my comment was misleading. I'm saying June thirtieth is the it's it's no later. This plan after June thirtieth, we definitely have to come back and present something different. If in the meantime, a week from now, a month from now, something comes up, I'm I did not mean to imply that this plan cannot be changed again.
And I might have implied that by my statement, and that's not what I meant. Like, we're shutting it down June thirtieth. We're not going to go anymore. No, that's not it. We're just we're just having a rethink.
I just want to make sure that's clear. This isn't an end of school.
I completely agree with this.
And and I want I also want to come back to, I think it was in October, November, one of the board meetings that we had at the high school, we were as a board were given the opportunity to come here once a week and make the decision of what we're going to do about the plan and keep moving forward with the plan. And we all voted and gave you that responsibility to help make those decisions with the gating criteria, with all the people that were involved, the district, the county health department, the state, and and the national. We gave that responsibility to you wholeheartedly, but as long as we were able to ask questions, seek out the information and get answers, not just what we wanted to hear, but what we needed to hear. So I appreciate all that hard work that you and your team have done. I do not want to go back to weekly meetings where we had to make that decision. That's what I trust you with.
Mark has tried to call the question twice. So all those in favor of the to approve the plan as presented, please raise your hands. Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Can I share? I apologize. I don't know that I missed a board meeting since I've been superintendent. It was it was a real short one if I did, but I have a family commitment tonight that my wife has got called out of town unexpectedly, and I need to take care of my family. So I'm in good hands for the rest of the meeting with these guys, but I'm going to excuse myself.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Good luck.
Have you taken any more action on anything tonight?
Not that I'm aware of. I need to go.
All right, because we're on a path of every meeting, we talk about ESTR funding, so I didn't want to do this out this meeting, but I think as well. And part of the reason that we're doing it in so many meetings is because it's a big number and there's lots of things going on with it. And we want to make sure that we're giving you bite-sized information all the time that you can digest and kind of get the big picture of what we're what we're looking at. So when we look at the the goals of ESTR funding, ESTR two and three, so ESTR two has been approved. I don't believe ESTR three has been well, maybe it's been approved, but we don't have our allocation yet. There are lots of allowable uses, a big list of things that we can do with these funds. But one of the things that we really want to target is what are the goals? What are all of those allowable uses? What are they what are they putting us towards in the overall goal? And it kind of breaks down into two levels. One, all students at or above grade level. I mean, it's no, you know, it's no misunderstanding by anyone that there is some learning loss that's happening during this time period. So how can we make up that learning loss and get all students at or above grade level, address the rigor, I've also noted the board goals that addresses as well, one eight, one nine, and also address the social and emotional needs of our students and our staff. You know, I think I don't know if it was you, Dana, or if it was Jennifer, that asked the question about, you know, are we talking to some medical providers and including them in our conversations? And absolutely, those are concerns that we have. We want to make sure that our students' needs are being met socially and mentally, not just constructionally. So everything that we're going to talk about tonight focuses on those goals. How can we invest these dollars to reach those goals? And because I like buckets and I like pictures, I want to, you know, to get some buckets in here. I don't need pictures.
There's no red bucket, though.
You know, I I would have noted that I that I cannot find a picture with a red bucket in my life. I would have had to go harder. So at the top of these buckets, we've got instructional, academic pieces, we've got social and emotional pieces, and we've got professional development pieces. That is one bucket where we will spend dollars and invest those resources that we are being given. A second bucket is COVID-related support, and we're going to talk about that tonight too and kind of what that entails. Some of those positions we've already put into place, and some of them we're going to ask that we get some additional positions to support. Again, going back to those goals that we talked about on the previous page, how can we support and make sure that we're achieving those goals that we want to attain? And then infrastructure and H track improvements. I think I don't know if it was last meeting or the current meeting to that. We talked a little bit about increasing the speed in which we can improve the annual air quality in all of our buildings by kind of maybe segregating out the middle piece, the SR two and SR three dollars that we're going to be given because that's now an allowable use. And so that makes up the third bucket there that we're going to try to spend some dollars in. So let's talk about the big picture, and it helps for me to break down into buckets. So ESTR two dollars, we do know that allocation is about five point nine million dollars is what we've been told. ESTR three is just an estimate. We don't have a for sure yet, but we have been hearing some rumblings. We have some information that says it's going to be about seven point nine million dollars. So that's the number we're using right now. It's like everything else, it could change. When it does, we'll update these, but for right now, these are the numbers that we're using. So we've got about thirteen point nine million dollars. ESTR two funds need to be spent by September thirtieth of twenty-three. So we've got two, basically, two years to spend those. ESTR three dollars have to be spent by September thirtieth of twenty-four. So three years in total to spend this bucket of money, but we're going to put it into one bucket. As we talked about on the previous slide, we're going to take out a small piece for infrastructure and H track upgrades, a small two million dollars, not small, but it compares to where we're at. Code-related support is about one point nine million over the three years, and I'll give you some detail on that in the later slide. What what this was trying to do is what are we going to be spending in that first top bucket? Remaining allocation to instruction, allocation to social, emotional, and right allocation to professional development. At this juncture, these big numbers, ballpark numbers that we're using, we are anticipating spending over seventy percent of the dollars that we are going to receive in ESTR two and ESTR three allocation in that top bucket of construction, professional development, and social and emotional. So if we have ten million dollars in that particular bucket, that yellow bucket that was at the top, over a three-year five hundred, we can spend about three point three million dollars. Three point three million dollars of new money each year is a lot of money. We want to make sure that we use wisely, we want to make sure that we invest it properly, and that we can make sure that we're hitting the goals and paying the goals that we're going to reach on that earlier slide. So we'll dive down just a little little bit deeper. Just a reminder, ESTR fund one ESTR one fund dollars are what we are spending this current year. ESTR fund ESTR one will be spent through June thirtieth. So our summer school program for this year is covered under ESTR one. Our current year after-school program is covered under ESTR one. These dollars here, we will not spend until next fiscal year, when we will start to spend those. We do have to go through a process that we didn't have to go through with ESTR one. We will have to get these our plan approved by the state before we can get reimbursement for many of these items. Doesn't mean we have to wait to spend them. That's the beauty of federal dollars that are on a reimbursement basis, and we can always spend, and then they give us later. But again, they would only give it to us if it met the criteria and your plan was approved. So. Again, trying to figure out in each of these years, how does that break down? And again, it's pretty easy. The H track and upgrades and infrastructure, the two million dollars breaks down pretty evenly over three years. Same thing with the code-related support breaks down pretty evenly over three years. And then we've got that three point three million dollars again, just kind of showing it to you in a three-year frame, looking at that one that we were looking at before. So then the question might be, holy cow, why are we going to spend three point three million dollars? I know it's hard to tell you an answer, but I don't have time to use that answer yet. But she wants to spend a lot of it, that is true.
Do you want me to step in?
Yeah. Very, very true. She's this a lot of it. But again, seventy percent, over seventy percent of those dollars are going to those to that particular bucket. That does tell us that this is a this is a sample investment, and I want to stress that it is a sample. These are all ideas, these are all possibilities. I just want to be able to take one step further and say, okay, we want to do an after-school program, about how much will that cost? So I put some pen and paper and put some numbers together. If we wanted to do middle school tutoring or middle school summer school, about what would that cost? Just to kind of give you an idea of how could these dollars be spent. But all of these ideas that are up here under the instructional pieces, instruction support and professional development, those were all developed out of the instruction office, out of principal principal groups meeting together, out of the building leadership teams getting together and saying, hey, we might have some money, what do you think we could do with it? Again, going back to those goals, if we if these are our goals and we have some money, what could we do with it? And so one thing that I envision a little bit is go back to our new process of resource allocation, which unfortunately we aren't going to do this year. But last year, what I loved about it was that we didn't really give them any parameters. We said, here are the things that we want you to attain. We want you to address board goals, kind of with strategies, what things that you want to implement. Tell us what you need to do though. Tell us how it's going to impact those board goals. Tell us how it's going to impact these goals here, and tell us how you're going to measure and then report back on that. And so then, though, they didn't have any parameters, you know, one percent or two percent. We wanted them to come up with the ideas that said, here's what I think will work, and here's what I think we need to make that happen. So that's a lot of what will happen next, is we will have groups that get together, and we started to kind of work on the framework for what does that proposal look like? Be able to come to us and say, again, those things, here's what I want, here's how much money I need, and how can we measure and report back that these things are actually working? Because just even if we do this in year one of ESTR two money, doesn't mean we're going to do it in year two. Maybe we come back and find that, you know, we tried it and it didn't really work. You know, that's one of the things I like to have, and you try stuff all the time and it doesn't work, so we try it differently. But that's the same way here. I mean, if our ultimate goal is to spend money and reach those goals, we want to make sure that we're actually looking at that every year. A few of the things, just to kind of talk about them. Again, the K six after-school program, that's one of the things that we currently have in place. We're using our ESTR one dollars. Additional para support so that we can basically expand our intervention support and help kids target those kids that need a little bit more help. In the media centers currently have an after-school program. Would you like to continue that? If that's some ideas in there, on instruction support, three bucks, Zoom, and Reminder, all things that we're currently using, but as you know, in technology, it wants to be renewed every year. So there's dollars to do that to support that. Another professional development, we've got some ideas for ways that we can help staff be able to measure where our kids at, understand where our where our kids are at, and how can we get them to that next level? So it's been interesting, some of the conversations that one of his teams have been having about the different types of PD that they want to do. I'm always amazed because I come from that world, but the ways that they can actually interact and support our teachers in that way. So pretty neat ideas there. But again, just a sample. We expect to come back to you later with more specific ideas that have kind of gone through that process of here's what I want, and here's what I need, and here's what I am going to do it. There are a couple that I want to bring to your attention. So you've got ones with asterisks. The K six after-school program, the virtual program, which is adding middle school people on it, that's something different. We're actually going to talk about that in the next presentation tonight. But there is a cost to it, it's about four hundred thousand dollars. And then the code-related positions does have an asterisk down there, but I don't even see that. And the reason those have a star is because those are something that we do need to know if we have the authority to move forward with on those. Because we need to get, if we look at the K six after-school program and the summer school program, we have coordinators that are currently in place. They need to know if they have a job next year. They need to be able to start planning and knowing what they can do to support their students. The virtual program would require us to staff it. We need to be able to get those positions going. We keep an opportunity to write those. And how code-related positions as well, you'll see, I'll give you some detail on those. But as I mentioned, some of those positions are already in place. Those people need to know if they're going to have a job next year. And then the additional positions that we would like to add, obviously, they need to be offered.
But you're not, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just because I told Jennifer something, you're not asking for action on that tonight?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, that would be at the April twelfth.
April twelfth.
Yes, absolutely. But I just want you to be aware that that's one of the headings that of all these other things, we're not going to ask for action on April twelfth, but those particular ones will need some action. So just so you look through those, we've got lots of placeholders. We've got a placeholder here for about seven hundred thousand dollars a year, and that could be where we get additional ideas. I mean, any one of those could be changed and swapped out with something else, but we have it so full that we've already come up with all the ideas. There's lots of placeholders for staff to tell us what they need.
So when you just talked about the process, is this, and I can't remember the name of the committee because there's too many committees at this point, but where we had the PD members come and the different levels came and presented their needs or whatever that they hoped to get funded, is that a similar process that you're talking about?
Or is that? I believe it would be a similar process, and that was resource allocation when we did that the last couple of years. And I can't remember, what was the name of that committee, the big committee that voted? The District Site Council. The District Site Council, thank you. I don't believe that this is, and we haven't finalized it all, but I don't believe that that would be a district site council issue. I think that that would probably more of some of the things we talked about is possibly curriculum council approving some of those because it really is our kids at or above grade level, and so it relates to the curriculum and how we're proposing that instruction. And again, not to create one more committee to do one more thing. That is our initial thought, but again, that could change as well. But do you have anything?
No, I I think curriculum council is a viable option for some of them because they may want a system that will help with interventions, and we have a whole intervention protocol with approved programs. So that has to go to the curriculum council to be approved so it can be added to that approved program. So curriculum council will probably be utilized quite a bit.
Yes, ma'am.
Two questions come to mind in this thinking process to prepare for the upcoming meeting. One of those is some of your asterisk requests. Well, how does this work, AJ, if we don't know what some of that's going on in the legislature right now, or this, and with the expectation of backfilling with some of these funds or what the state provides us? That takes away our our dreaming.
Sure.
Or our our strategies, not dreaming, it's not irrelevant, our strategies.
You are absolutely correct. Should some of the legislation that's currently being proposed actually come to it come to play in that they would require, they're going to pull state dollars from us and we're and expect us to use the ESTR dollars to backfill that? This would go away. And so you are correct, we are taking a little leap of faith that that's not going to happen. Should that happen, this would all be, this would all have to come back to the table and we'd have to look at it again because if that happens, this has to change.
Yeah, and so. Well, you have that element, and then you've just got the realities in the classrooms with the kids and the need to catch them back up at or above grade level. And meanwhile, back at the HR office, I was just waiting for him to sit up straight. There he is. You you've got the challenges that are ongoing that we have in this district to keep teachers in the classroom from the standpoint of of just enough teachers. And and then the substitutes have that challenge. So but but also, in that environment of staffing and that environment of kids' need, you all have this additional challenge then of trying to work with less staff to do even more with to meet the kids' needs. And and it's a tough one. I mean, and so you've got all kinds of decisions there. I can't help but come back to something that's always I can't help but come back to something that's always there. When we talk about effective classrooms, we talk about classroom sizes. And so when you have less teachers to work with, or you have, you can't fill long-term subs, I'm fearful, and that's, so I'm sort of asking the question, you know, that we're going to end up next year with bigger class sizes.
I don't think that's.
And, and so, and that's, that works against your, your normal environment, let alone trying to catch them up.
Absolutely, and I think as we go through some of these positions, um, so if we talk about the K six after-school and summer school program, that would be no additional staff in what we already have. It would just basically be utilizing the current staff that we have, they're doing the after-school program and/or their, um, additional time that they do in the summer. The virtual program, um, would be a couple more teachers, I believe, a couple certified staff?
Yeah, and just, um, one.
Okay.
One certified at the middle school, if we add the middle school program.
Right.
And that'll be in the next presentation, yeah.
But one of the things in here, if you'll notice, we, I didn't talk about it, but we've added, oh, I guess I did, the fourteen paras, one in each elementary building. So you are correct, we are having a hard time finding certified staff. This would be an opportunity for us to be able to find classified staff to support our certified staff in the instruction process. So.
So, I, I guess something I'd be really fascinated to hear, it's just numbers, but, but do we have like second grade cla, are we going to less second grade classes? And by doing that, getting more kids in each of the second grade classes that our teachers are and, and administrators are trying to manage?
He's actually looking at that right now, so I'm going to let him talk about it.
To weigh in on this one.
Trying to add something?
Yes, sir, that's why I had you sit up straight.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so, so Mark, um, as a reminder to everyone, so about this coming year, every year, we start doing that analysis for that very thing that you're talking about. Uh, are we efficient in our staffing positions across the district based on enrollment, based on class size, the after-class sizes for grade levels, those kinds of things? So, uh, so I've gone through that process, uh, already, and have begun to have conversations with, um, building level principals to make sure that, you know, my, my facts are, are correct. And, and although right now it's only a projection, we essentially have taken, um, this year's current numbers and we've rolled those over to next year. So this year's kindergarteners will become next year's first graders and so on and so forth. Then we put that into the slot of, do we have enough staff? Do we have too many staff at that particular grade level that we need to shuffle people around on? So, so we've done that analysis right now, and again, it's just projection, so I don't want to be quoted as this is, you know, set in stone. But our class sizes are right now right between twenty and twenty-two across those K four grade levels. So that's, that's even lower than our, um, board recommended maximums. And again, just as a caveat, there will be pockets, there'll be a school that will be maxed out, but there'll be another school that will be, uh, lower, just based on boundaries, based on, you know, lots of different factors. But on average, I think we're at twenty-one, I don't have it in front of me, but I think we're at twenty-one in kindergarten, I think we're at twenty-one in first grade, second grade. We do go up, I think, to twenty-three in third grade, and then we go back to twenty-one at fourth grade. Um, but each one of those does have more capacity. Uh, third grade, although the projection is at twenty-three, each one of those classrooms could technically go to a twenty-five, which is the board recommended maximum. So I think our class sizes are in very, very good shape, um, with the staff that we have in terms of projected fills. Now, not all those positions are filled yet, but if we had, as an example, three, uh, teachers at, out the ground to teach third grade, that's three sections there. If we're filling those sections, then that's what our class sizes should be.
Well, that's helpful, I.
So I want to see if those are job, will be done.
Yeah, I mean, he does his job. Well, I know he will, I mean, he's great at it, and there's so many moving pieces there. Because you've got kids and siblings in a cl, in a school, and potentially, we could find a situation where kids that went to school with other kids have to now move, change schools because we're not offering enough second grade classes. And, and then we.
That's part of our normal process. So we, we look at that, again, every year. Um, it's kind of based on that city with the number of sections that we have in school. Um, we do have a, a few occasions for forced transfer kids because of those, uh, obstacles, if you will. But, um, you know, to the board's credit, um, our number of transfers because of boundary changes that we have implemented a number of years ago are way down from what they were previously. So, um, I should take that we need a lot of our, our funding need in terms of, uh, school collection.
Yeah, and so I was just bringing it up as another compounding thing. When, when you're looking at this and you're, we're going to be talking about catching kids up, you, you've still got the, the sort of routine there, kind of reality, of how challenging it is to staff the positions, uh, that we have. And I, I guess my only comment after all of this time, uh, is just sort of get that out there. But also, um, somehow in this, and you've already alluded to it, we've got to underwrite those features and those situations, I mean, with some of this money. And so you've already pointed out that the para thing, uh, there's probably more. So anyway, that's just a.
And we do want to tie the money to COVID-related expenses.
Well, and just even the professional development, um, you know, that is specifically targeting, how can we support teachers in their need to assess, measure, educate, and readdress those issues? So I, um, and there are dollars actually in there for that as well, too, so.
Thank you for the time.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So COVID-related support, this is, uh, one of the three buckets. And you'll notice there are, we've got some items in green and some items in blue. The items in green are what we currently have. Blue would be the additional ones that we would like to add, uh, beginning of next year. And I was kind of walking through each one, and again, they all have to tie to COVID in some way. Um, the nurse position, um, we added a nurse, and what that enabled us to do is Michelle Shaw, our, uh, health services coordinator, was actually a half-time coordinator and a half-time building nurse. Putting in another nurse this year allowed her to be a full-time coordinator and allowed us to have additional support, um, in the, an additional half-time nurse, um, other than what we had previously out in the building. So that was actually very beneficial, especially given how the year started and how it has continued, um, because the nursing staff does a much different role than what they did in previous years. They have to do the same things they were doing before, plus all the additional COVID-related, um, items. So, we also added two healthcare professionals this year. Um, again, kind of going back to your question a little bit, Mark, sometimes nursing staff is hard to find. Um, so we looked for, um, health classified staff that had certification that allowed us to still provide, um, nursing care and healthcare-related services to our students. And by adding those two healthcare professionals, we were able to get every school building, um, healthcare workers every day, maybe not all day, but at least for a portion of the day. So we're still not every day, all building, but we're definitely better than what we were last year. Again, Mark, it's almost like you were playing for me tonight. You talked about the need to be able to, I know, I.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I should have been quiet and waited.
No, it's very, because you're correct. When you talk about an H R coordinator, I mean, where the questions might be, well, how does that relate to COVID? Well, this year, it related to COVID a lot in that we had to talk about accommodations from staff. We talked about COVID leave and tracking that. But going forward, having the additional support in the H R department to be able to staff and, and attract and retain, um, competent people, we can help and work with our students. I mean, we're able to do so much more now, just had some, um, interesting stories about ways that we can respond now to things that we haven't been able to respond to in the past and make sure that we are doing the best we can to keep all the staff that we had and to attract a little bit of staff that we want to be working with our students.
Can I ask you a quick question on that?
Yes.
I'm sorry for the time, but, uh, you know, an H R person with temporary monies might be a little different than, say, keeping a teacher in that second grade class for another year, uh, in order to keep class sizes down to address the COVID backlog, if you will. And so how, how do you, how do you, what's your response to that?
You are absolutely correct. These are all funded out of, um, short-term dollars. So if, when we get to the end of year three, if, say, all these positions are filled, we will have to determine, is there a way to fund these, or do these positions go away? And hopefully, some of these, I mean, hopefully we'll get to a point, and we always want to have nursing staff, that's probably a bad one. Um, but you talk about, um, you know, counselors and social workers. I mean, hopefully we would get to a point where, and again, that's probably a bad idea, we're always going to need them.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe we won't need them as much. I mean, so, but if it's important enough that we're able to, that we want to keep them in three years, then we will have to find a way to fund them, absolutely. Yeah, this is not a, a permanent solution by any means.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, we have an instruction assessment facilitator. Currently, this position is paid for with our late grant, which is, uh, going away at the end of this year. And this person worked a lot with remote learning, uh, virtual students, uh, helping a lot with teachers and their instruction on the remote level or the virtual level. Um, and as we kind of flip into next year, and we really talk about how we're going to address these goals, we want to utilize this person in order of a, um, assess and measure where our students are at. Um, and it's supporting the teachers with instruction on how, you know, based on that information we have on the assessments. And then the new ones that we would potentially like to add, two counselors and social workers. These are a little different in that they're not typically how we would maybe keep a counselor. Um, we really want to be able to focus on behaviors and really focusing on family engagement. And that's kind of how we see those two positions. Um, again, all centered around COVID, but how can we address those issues and support our students?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's not the next question.
Okay.
On the instruction and the, like you said, that will provide it through the link grant.
Currently, currently paid through the link grant. We get a million dollars a year for the past three years, um, to help literacy. And that is where that position has come from. Um, and so we would like to, once that is now going away, we would like to support it with S R dollars. Uh, wellness facilitator, I think you talked about this a little bit previously. Uh, this one will be strictly to support staff. I mean, I suppose, um, it could support students, but our focus is really on how do we support staff and their social, emotional issues, um, that they're facing, uh, because of everything that's going on. Uh, currently, our, you would pay for this half out of S R funds and half out of nutrition services.
I asked a question on that, because it's, how, how do you envision that occurring? Will, will they put out their signs that the doctor is in, or, I mean, how does, how does that? It's certainly, uh, a good call, but I'm just curious.
It could actually, it could be lots of things. It could be, um, really making sure that this person is up to speed on what all of our benefit offerings are. So when someone comes to you and says, you know, I'm really having some issues with some legal issues, well, you know what, we've got a place that you can go to do that. And even though we try to do that now, we just don't always have the availability to, to get that word out, or people don't always know where to go to find out that we have those resources. So having a person that is very, um, well-versed in what our benefits are, it's not just necessarily, um, sometimes I think maybe healthy is what I'm thinking of, I mean, sure, we're all eating our fruits and vegetables, we're doing our walking, but making sure that we're taking care of those other issues, too. Yeah, I don't know, me neither. Um, but, you know, from a well-rounded, um, ability, how can we support our teachers and, and any of our, uh, staff in any way that they need?
Thank you.
So that's really what that, we, it's a very broad spectrum of what that job could entail, um, you know, to be able to offer support.
I got, I got a little bit sidetracked mentally. We're talking about ten positions, right, we're adding ten?
Um.
Was there another slide?
We have five already, we have the green ones.
Uh-huh.
Those are already in place. And then, so two, three, four, five would be the ones that we would add.
So if we, even if we counted the five we already have, so we have ten extra positions, Keith, can you talk to me about the need for an H R coordinator for ten more positions?
Keith, did you?
Talk to you about the need of the H R coordinator?
All right, we have an H R coordinator for how many positions currently in the district?
Uh, so we have two hundred and eighty-five employees currently in our expansion.
And how many H R coordinators?
Uh, so we have myself working in personnel, then we have one H R coordinator that's already been funded as part of our budget.
Uh-huh.
Then we have the additional H R coordinator that would be added with these additional S R dollars.
So we have twelve and five with two H R personnel, and we're adding ten, if you count the H R coordinator himself, or when I add an H R coordinator? Help me with the math on that.
So the H R coordinator isn't just going to be hiring these other ten, they're going to be to support all of our hiring, recruiting, retention effort? So like KJ talked about, you know, one of our goals, uh, has to do with our board goal priority one point nine in terms of rigorous instruction. So I think a component of that is, is being able to have our buildings, you know, fully staffed with competent people. And so having additional support here in this office to be able to go and find those people, make contact, um, work on the retention aspect of that is going to be a key to being able to meet that goal of every student being on our grade level.
Would it be misleading to say, though, that, um, under this slide, it says COVID-related support? It sort of implies that the H R coordinator is a specific role related to the response to what's happened because of COVID? We're adding an H R coordinator because of COVID, the need for COVID-related support? When in fact, you're saying, you know?
I, I, I'm sorry, I was panicked, and I was, I was a bit confused in the beginning. So, so we, we have the additional H R coordinator in place, um, because of COVID. So we did that at the start of this school year. So that person was, uh, I guess her role really was designed to help in the H R office to address around COVID-related issues. So all of her time essentially was, uh, to work through the plan, to work through the plan in terms of dealing with COVID leave, uh, COVID accommodations. So that's what she was on all of this year. Um, and, and that does, it's like, it's a, it's a full-time day, uh, day for her. So it's that same person, and so the same system, so we're not adding one more additional. It's, it, that was a one-year-only, uh, position that would be active. So this would be taking that existing position and now extending that person for multiple years. Uh, but her role, we don't actually know what COVID-related issues from the personnel department will be, but we are still going to have the need to deal with COVID aspects, because we're still going to have the need to do, uh, COVID-related accommodations, similar to what A D A did here. So those may be shrinking as our, you know, need for that or community members, those kinds of things. But also, a COVID-related issue in terms of student performance is, is in that potential of mentality with students being on grade level. So, so that person working to get staff is really supporting that COVID-related issue of student academic performance, uh, by hiring more and more individuals and by working on such members.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then the last two, uh, that we have on there, uh, as you're aware, currently our role principals at Jamie Barker and Fimel are half-time in their home buildings, and then they're half-time each, um, at Alt Brown and A P W. So one of the things that we are proposing is to add a TOSA, which is a teacher on a special assignment that would basically act as an assistant principal. Um, what this would do is it would allow our Jamie Barker and Fimel principals to go back to their buildings full-time. We also plan to, um, assign additional duties that they could be able to do from their buildings. But that additional TOSA then would be able to, um, split Alt Brown and A P W and do the assistant principal role that our role principals had been filling, um, in previous issues, or previous years. And again, one of those things, when you go back to, okay, what goal does it address? We're talking about additional behavior issues, additional social, emotional issues, and then additional just support for teachers to be able to get all students at or on a grade level. So the same thing applies basically to the next one, which is the TOSA again at Sits and Stones. Um, it would be a teacher on a special assignment that would be an assistant principal that would split their time between Charles Stones and one of these sits, again, to just provide assistant principal support, um, for students and staff. And we already have a half-time, we already have a person that is split between the two buildings, so this would be a full-time person, we, the principal, to help, okay, sorry, we're good. So part of the thinking on this is we really are going to need to dive very deeply into our data. We're going to need to figure out exactly what. We're going to need to figure out exactly what kids are needing. So do they need fluency? Do they, do they need phonics? Do they need, you know, math facts? Do they need, you know, and there's all kinds of things that if we dive into our data, we actually have a tool with our FastBridge and our Aluminate to dive deeply into that and then really individualize what we're working on with kids. But that's going to take a leader to help work with staff and figure out, okay, what do we need to do next? What's our plan for these kids? And our thinking is, is that if we put those full-time principals out there, they can help drive that instruction and that, that plan to make sure all of our kids are where we want them to be. And the same thing with our two intermediate schools because those folks do a lot of managerial kinds of things. And we want to free them up to be instructional leaders.
I just like to comment that I really appreciate that it's going to be like an evaluation of data. Obviously, like I'm a data person, but I hope that there's a lot of teacher input with that as well because they're on the front lines, they're the ones that see the real needs of students because we don't often see the true needs of students solely in data. So I just want to make sure.
You're going to see a lot of the work happen in the professional learning communities, the small teacher groups, so they're going to work with, you know, this difficult team is going to focus on this group of kids.
One of the things that's really come out to me as we've gone through this process is Dr. Carlin has focused so much on reminding us that we really need to look at how we are doing something. Just because we've always done it doesn't mean it's necessarily going to work to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve. So again, it goes back to that teacher input of you know what little Johnny needs and you know how he responds. What is going to be the best to make sure Johnny, little Johnny gets to where he needs to be? So I think we're going to see a lot of different changes and strategies and methodologies because our kids are a little different now than they were a year ago. So how do we help them get to where they need to be? And the only way we're going to do that is through a lot of input from staff. And again, that's, I think, why the support is extremely important. You know, one of the things that I always have a problem with, I, I feel like I have high expectations of people, but it's not fair to have high expectations if I don't give you the tools to succeed. And I think that's what some of the support does, and especially with the dollars that we've talked about putting towards PD, targeted PD that's going to help with the assessments and evaluations, and then how to turn that data into something that turns to the next page of how then can I help little Johnny get to where he needs to be? That's what excites me about it is that I really feel like we are going to have high expectations because we are going to have to report to the state and to the Fed how we spent 13 or 14 million dollars and did we achieve those goals that we wanted to meet? So we're going to be held accountable and we really need to make sure that the strategies we're using are actually working.
And I might just add one more piece, what Dana's coming about data and just looking at every kid based on test scores. But data has changed a lot over the years. Those are still very important as the tools that go into making about that. But we also have our social, emotional, curriculum talent, which will also be a, of data. Is looking into those aspects as well. So it's not just about test scores necessarily when we're talking about data.
And I think that was all I had on this, just another big sized piece of ESR funding. Again, no action that we're asking for tonight. I'm just thinking about those positions and those programs. We'll talk more about those on the twelfth, but if you have more questions about this, feel free to reach out to us between now and when we need to this for you. Any other questions on this, or it?
Okay. Hey, so you mentioned in the outline that we need to follow this one as ESR funds, that the government's going to be watching us. Do we get penalized at the end of, if we're outside those parameters, you know, once we, are we going to do the self-audit? Is the government allowed to audit? You know what I'm saying? I'm just kind of looking at the details here.
Honestly, it's, that's a good question and I can tell you that, so when, you know, we got ESR one funding or the CARES dollars shortly after the pandemic started. And when we got it, we didn't know that there were going to be reporting requirements with it. I mean, we, we knew, but we didn't know what they were going to be. And honestly, I didn't know what the questions were going to be or what it was even going to look like until I got my first quarterly report, hey, you need to do this. So I think they're designing that, you know, kind of, they're building the airplane in flight as they're going as well. So that's why I'm really concerned and wanting to make sure that we are thinking as we go through this process because I want to make sure that we are able to have the data that we're going to need to respond to the anticipated questions that I think they're going to have. And knowing that the goals are every student at or above grade level, that's going to be the answers we need to be able to provide. So I don't know that there is going to be repercussions if we don't make it. Nothing has been said, but that doesn't mean that wouldn't happen. I mean, we're dealing with the government, so you never know. But I do know they are going to hold us accountable and they're going to want answers on how to spend the money.
And we have enough people in the financial aspect of it to monitor that? I mean, as far as part of CFO duties or for staff?
Of course.
Okay, I just, I just asked a question. And the essence?
From a, from a financial perspective, it's one more bucket of money to account for.
Fantastic. So on the ESR two funds, that was money just given us because of the CARES and the, and the COVID. We didn't, we weren't expecting that money at the beginning. So what with the ESR three funds, we're talking about maybe, maybe an estimate of 7.9.
Right.
So I'm just trying to, trying to get something to hit the mark from the 5.9 if we had an estimate that didn't sound like it.
Well, the ESR funds, so now those are based on our allocation of Title I dollars. And so they're based on students that are at risk. So districts with high at-risk populations receive more dollars. So obviously that's why we get a significant proportion. And there was a formula that basically said, and I don't know the exact formula. It was one and a half times, two and a half times, whatever that was. We are anticipating that same, similar formula for ESR three. But ESR three dollars won't, I've been told we won't have our allocations until possibly the middle of April. So again, we're
This year.
Correct, this year. But again, we will have until fiscal year '24 to spend them. So even though we have two buckets of money to spend, we'll spend ESR two dollars first. And that we do know the allocation for, and so that's how we'll move forward and try to plan for that.
So we're not spending millions of dollars ahead of time waiting for the government to reimburse us?
No, absolutely not. We're not going to spend any of that ESR three dollars till I know for sure what those allocations are. Absolutely. And then the other piece to that is that we get a comfort level that the state is not going to make us backfill losses in state funding with the ESR dollars.
And to that extent, KJ, mightn't your planning and all of this work help provide examples to legislators on if you deny X amount of dollars or you do this backfill thing, you are actually taking this or that, I mean, specific things from the government city program?
Absolutely. Because like you said, if you make us backfill even all of it, none of these programs can happen. So the additional things that we want to do to support kids and their learning loss, we're going to have to figure out how to do it and I don't know how we're going to do that.
So in the related positions we talked about, that you had an asterisk that we need to maybe take some action on, even though we don't know if we're going to have the dollar amounts? We're going to figure that out to cover that cost?
Well, the good news about part of it, not really good news, but one of the things that I see as a little bit of a safety net is that the only thing, and we're going to talk about the virtual option next, that would be a certified teacher. That would be the only one that was under contract. Everyone else that we had talked about in there would be classified staff. But unfortunately, they're at will employees and if something in our budget changes, we, we could find them a new home or they wouldn't be with us.
I just want to make sure it matters for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And nobody's actually going to lose their job.
He just got plenty of jobs for people, so.
Okay, he said it at the beginning, so I think, that's all I think.
Anything here or should, can we go on to the virtual presentation? Are you guys currently in London, I had? Well, I'll keep you up there as long, I, I'm probably going to find some handcuffs and just kind of just keep you there. Yeah, because that's not how this works.
You have to get around to it.
Like the, the house, I never lose a place about being overstaffed.
All right, we're going to talk about virtual school. In a prior presentation, I shared with you that the state changed their guidance and said remote would not be an option next year. If we were going to do something and had to go to virtual. And that included funding. So this year, remote kids count the same as onsite kids. And I'm going to let KJ talk about that here in just a minute, so that part's coming. But it certainly will change how we have to look at this. We did do a parent survey. I was absolutely thrilled with the participation and the results, actually. I was, I was pretty confident until I talked to KJ. So, so this is the parent survey by grade. How many said no, we don't care if there's a virtual option, and how many said yes, we would like to see a virtual option? So as you can see, we had 44, the, the lowest number was our senior class, only 13 there. But everyone else has a sizable number that we could definitely look at a virtual option based on, on what people are saying, hey, yeah, we'd like to have that option. So the numbers would certainly allow us to look at that. So that's what we did. We looked at it. I met with the, the folks that are currently doing our remote and we put a presentation together. So based on what we know from experience this year and what it would look like, if we looked at a, an elementary version of virtual, we would anticipate needing at least one teacher per grade level. Right now, we have two to three teachers per grade level for remote. But we would look at one teacher per grade level, grades K through six, with one para because we thought that would help in case those numbers do fluctuate. If you have 50 kids in a Zoom, even though you think, well, I don't have to deal with them being out of their seats or talking or whatever, but it's hard to keep track of who's participating and who's not. So another pair of eyes, somebody to help small groups or do tutoring. We felt that each would need a para. Another one of the feedbacks was if somebody pulled the science, that would help us because we still have to do reading, writing, arithmetic, teaching, music, you know, all of those. And we're going to talk about some of those as well. So one specialist teacher to help feed the, feed the music and art. One special education teacher because as, as you know, we have to offer this to everybody. We can't say, well, we'll take everybody, but you know, if you have an I P. So we would need to have that special education teacher. Interestingly enough, when I talked to the group about we need at least one person to have ESL endorsement because we're going to have those students as well sign up. Out of the, the people that said, yes, I want this, 100 of those were not English-speaking families. So we know that there was an interest there as well. All of the folks that said we would be going to continue in a virtual option next year had their ESL endorsement. So I was like, yes, yeah, way to go, guys. And then continue with a part-time principal right now. Michelle Kent does the virtual or the remote in her building, so continue in that format. So that's when Linda passed it to me and said, here's all this exciting stuff I want to do. Now pay for it. Okay. I took together the staffing cost based on the information that she provided on the slide previously. And just because there will be a supply cost, I plugged the number in there, that's what I do. And about $923,000 is what it's going to cost, I believe, to run a virtual program at the elementary level. So then let's talk about funding. We had 382 students that said they had an interest at the K through six level. I'm going to guess not, when we get down to it, not everybody's sure we're going to do it. They think they want to, but they don't. So for purposes of this example, I just said, let's say 50% of them say, I, I want to go to a virtual program. We receive $5,000 per student in a virtual program. So as Linda said before, this year, we got an exemption where our remote students were counted just as if they were onsite. And that's great because they come with wings. They're not just one FTE, they have at-risk wings, they have transportation wings, they have ESL wings, fed wings, the wings. All of those add additional dollars that we receive because of those students. If I take them out of the general fund, which is where these students are now, and I move them to my virtual bucket, next year, they don't take their wings with them. All I receive is $5,000 per student. The other thing that's interesting about this is it's an all or nothing. If they are not full-time, if they are anything but full-time, then you're. So a little risk there. But you're going, like KJ, there's $955,000 there. We just said on the last slide it was going to take $923,000. We paid for it. I would say, yes, you're right, but keep in mind that these are now over here in the virtual bucket. We took those students out of the general fund bucket. So what I usually received for them in this hand has gone away. And this is where in our meetings, I think Keith referred to me as a deflating balloon.
That wasn't nice.
I know. Unfortunately, when those students are over here in the general fund and they have their wings, now everybody's different, but on an average, each student has an average of 1.8 FTE. And we get there by saying, we have about 7,200 students, right? But when I get my weighted FTE, we're at about 12,000. So instead of being 7,200 times the base data for people, which is basically $5,000, it's 12,000 times $5,000. So if on average, every student brings in 1.8 FTE, they are worth, I need to say worth, I need to look at that. They bring in more than $5,000. They, we will have a loss in this hand of 1.6 million dollars. I've still got the same number of teachers, the same number of staff, the same number of expenses, but I now in short, 1.6 million dollars to pay for the things we want to do at the general fund. So even though it looked like it paid for itself, by doing this option, we would have to come up with 1.6 million dollars over here to keep everything operating in this bucket for maybe 200 students. That's a lot of money.
So what are you going to do, right?
You didn't say it on the original example of ideas and what we thought we might do with our ESR's money.
That's a little bit of a slide mark. You, you get to vote on that.
Yeah, this was a, it's a, it's a, yeah. If you tell us to do this, just know that's what that means. Is we have to find 1.6 million dollars to keep the general fund operating as it should.
It shouldn't be a problem.
It should be, um, it should be. All right, so then this is the secondary option that I talked to with the staff. They would like two full-time teachers, that's an increase of one teacher. We're talking about Catherine Mormon's Virtual Academy right now. So what we're talking about is expanding that program to serve middle school. So instead of a nine-12 program, it would be a seven-12 program. We would increase one teacher. We would like to pull it apart because from the alternate center, at least start that process, maybe not do it completely, but start that process. That's a state recommendation. And so we would like to have a part-time administrator there instead of having Mark do it and the C P and the alternate center. And that is actually changing the salary of the current coordinator. Add one full-time para, that would be part-time sped. That currently, that currently exists, you have part-time sped and part-time para. And then a classified halftime para, halftime secretary, which would be a new position. So all in all, we would add one teacher and add one classified to pick up the middle school at our current virtual. And that would be using edge mobility. So that's why we don't need as many teachers. And so we're going to go through the financial piece again, but one more thing I want you to know is it costs significantly less to do a middle school program. I mean, we're talking about a fewer number of teachers, fewer number of people involved. So that's why it doesn't look quite as drastic as the previous one. So again, I priced out everything that she had on the previous slide. I threw in some supplies, about $140,000, not too bad. Number of students with interest with, for grades seven and eight is 97. I'd like to think there'd be a little bit more participation at this level just because those kids are at the point where they can probably do some online learning a little bit easier. So I live at 80%. Again, at $5,000, we're actually going to make money in the virtual program now. This is great. So there's only going to cost us $140,000 to do it. But my balloon is going to deflate. And again, if we look at those students and we remove them from the general fund at that average of 1.8 in waiting, we are going to lose approximately $660,000 in the general fund. But we were making a little extra over here, right? Because we were going to get 390, it's only going to cost us 140, 150 to run it. Because we were going to get three hundred and ninety, it's only going to cost us a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty to run it. So, it's not going to cost us, because we can take some of that money back and leave, leave it in here. I just want to transfer it over here. So, it's going to cost us about four hundred thousand dollars of ESSR money to supplement the general fund to make sure that it stays whole to run a middle school virtual program. Does that make sense?
For one year?
For one year, correct.
So, this time you said it's going to take ESSR money, so that's what you're talking about? Because the first one, we didn't talk about using ESSR money. We just said, how are we going to pay for that?
We didn't, because, uh, we got to the point where we thought we can't use one point six million dollars of ESSR funds every year. We didn't, we didn't think we had that based on the numbers we looked at from the previous presentation. It, it didn't make sense to us to allocate one point six million dollars of ESSR funds to supplement the general fund for that program.
I didn't know that, there wasn't a pre-quantum in my.
You're right.
So, for all of the, the programs, if we continue, um, we can afford to continue at George Matthews. Five through twelve would be an alternate center. Um, nine through twelve would stay in the location, seven and eight would join that location. And five, six, um, if we did it, would be in a classroom down the hall from, from that. So, that, that would be a total picture of where they would be located at. But again, if we look at just adding the middle, they would all be in the current location. So, nobody's space needed.
I don't understand what that means. So, they're virtual, but they're.
Where would the staff be located at? So, and, and also with the virtual, testing has to be done onsite, so we have to have a location to bring students into. So, those virtual teachers would still need to have a classroom space and a location to bring students in.
Uh, all levels have to be tested onsite?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not happening currently, right?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're currently working on that, yes. We originally, when COVID first started, um, the first word that came out from KSDE that it looked like anybody that was remote would, we would have a waiver on and we wouldn't have to test them. And then they came back and said, no, you have to test them, and state assessments cannot be given remotely.
So, we're talking about the assessments, not class per se?
We have brought in all of our remote kids. I'm not, I'm not going to say all, the majority of our, our remote kids to do even our fast bridge and, and those types of things. And when Kathleen currently gives an assessment, say even an end-of-chapter test in math or ELA or whatever the student's taking, they come into her lab and take it there.
Okay. It's a little different in high school, though, right? Because my, my daughter's kind of doing a hybrid program, she doesn't fully do testing, it's all online.
Yeah, and, and the fast bridge, it depends on the grade. Fast bridge only goes, um, to ninth grade, I believe. And then, um, there are no state assessments until they get to their junior year.
Okay, so the majority are currently having at some point to go in-person.
Yes, correct.
And just to expand on that, when we go to this program, we literally have to make it, it's a virtual program and it has to match the virtual requirements. Whereas the remote learning that we have right now didn't exactly, they didn't match exactly with the virtual. Um, but they are trying to, and some of those are on the testing. But that's a requirement of a virtual program, is that they have to come in and take their tests.
This, I, I, my question too, is just sort of a problem here, maybe getting to it. But, I've just been dying to know how our program worked. I mean, here, we're talking about shifting gears, but certainly we were all learning. But I'm just wondering how, how, like, are, are all our teachers staying, they're remote?
So, feedback that we've gotten, um, from staff, from families, it's kind of been just them talking to us and what the teachers are telling us. I think the majority of the virtual teachers would tell you, the kids that participated like, like we intended them to. So, they showed up for the Zoom classes, they did their homework, and they, that type of thing. We actually felt they did pretty darn good. Um, and, and many of them, um, I actually got that out of one teacher, because he was really excited. And he said, okay, so here are my kids that participated like they were supposed to, and they all showed really good growth. And here are the kids that I have that didn't follow our expectations, they didn't come to the Zoom meetings, they didn't do their homework like they were supposed to. I had trouble contacting them throughout the day, that type of thing, and they didn't show growth. I mean, it was, it's kind of like attendance onsite. If they're not there doing what they're supposed to do and participating, it's hard for us to show that growth. But he was real adamant that the kids that actually participated like they were supposed to showed really good growth.
I, I heard some teachers, and their passion, of course, is cool. I mean, it covers all culture, Trump strategy kind of thing. But, uh, I just kind of wondered, because one of the indicators as well, that our teachers say, enough, that's enough for me, and I'm out of here, uh, for, you know. You clearly had some interest by, by students and families because of your survey.
Right.
I was just wondering how it worked. And you must, because you put together a proposal.
Right, and with the exception of, Heath, you might want to help me out here, but I want to say with the exception of maybe one or two spots, we had enough teachers that did remote this year that wanted to continue, that we weren't going to have to recruit virtual teachers. Now, Heath was going to have to recruit to fill them.
That's true, so we, uh, like, yeah, we would be down, with this current proposal, we'd be downsizing the size of our staff if we needed. But with, and, and we only kind of include the student who are actually going to work. Uh, we had enough teachers, not just, you know, the five, they would choose, you know, an effort.
And, and one of the things we tried really hard to do is to keep those remote teachers informed and part of this process. When we first got the survey and, and KJ and Heath were going to test, I mean, I was like, yes, yes! Because we have, now, I had parents call me and say, this is the first year my kid who was one of those classroom talkers and always had a seat, he never got in trouble this year. And he's got all legs. Yeah, I mean, you know, things like that, those anecdotal kind of stories. So, I was going, there's a place for this. So, I was really pumped, I took it to the teachers and again, said, okay, here's what our survey said. So, that's when we sat down and said, okay, this is what worked, this is what didn't, this is what we need. And then, the state came in and said, in your town, it has to be funded next year. And that's when KJ burst my bubble, so.
But I think, to be fair, this is, I, I, you really, you think this. It's no different than when we, uh, when COVID hit and we went to, what was it called?
When you have continuous learning.
We went to continuous learning. And then, when we got to this school year and we said, hey, you would like a remote option, there were lots of people that said, oh, yeah, sign me up, because I can do that. And then they realized that there were, it was a lot stricter.
Yes, there were deadlines.
The virtual program is even stricter. So, um, when I talked about, um, if you didn't need a one FTE, you got nothing. If you don't have elementary kids, and I don't know the exact time, I'll probably get it wrong, but if, if these elementary students aren't online, participating in their classes five to six hours a day, we don't get to count them. And I think at that age, that, I think that if parents understood those were going to be the requirements, what sounded like a really good idea, all of a sudden, isn't as good anymore. So, it's just that by nature of the virtual program design, how it has to be, and there's probably kids that would do great in it, but maybe not as many as thought this would be a good idea.
I think the younger, social, emotional, such a big part of it.
Yeah, and, and what KJ very graciously did then, if we went back to the group of virtual teachers and we ran through all of this with them, including the money, and as much as they were hoping it would be a go next year, they went, yeah, we get it. I mean, because we're taking, here's a million and a half, but yes, that ESSR maybe could, if we, we don't even have that much luck now, we'll have to look at it really, but, but a million and a half from ESSR to, to do maybe, would you figure a hundred students or whatever?
Two hundred kids.
What could we do with a million and a half dollars if we spread it out among everybody instead of just this group of kids? So, so they, they really got it. And I went over and visited with one in particular, um, yesterday, and she said, just what you said, Mark. She said, you know, I taught, she taught kindergarten, and she helped with the first grade some too. And she said, the littles really need to be onsite, in my opinion. She said, so I totally get that too, you know, the whole phonics and the relationship piece and the social, emotional. And she said, it's just really hard with the littles, so. So, yeah, they get it, um, they know all about the presentation tonight. They're not, you know, like leaving their birth or anything, so. There were no secrets, so they know exactly what's going on.
I do have some questions for that. So, on the virtual program that you talked about, when Mark asked you, what's the success of students? That's our actual virtual program that's already been in existence at the alternative center?
No, what I was talking about when he asked the question was our current remote setting. So, the kids that chose to do remote this year.
Okay, because you said virtual, so that's why I was.
Yeah, I'm trying to, yeah, when it first came out, I called it a virtual all the time. And I said, I've got to get used to saying remote, because that's what it is this year. And now the state is saying, go back to virtual, so now I'm just trying to stop saying remote and go back to virtual, and it just.
But we do currently have a virtual program at the alternative center, right?
Correct, yes, nine through twelve currently.
What is it?
Nine through twelve.
Nine through twelve. And how many students do we have enrolled in now?
About a hundred and fifty. And they also serve adults that want to, to get a diploma.
Okay.
So, they have.
And do those students have to come online to do virtual school occasionally, or how does that program work?
You mean, do they come onsite?
Onsite, yes, sorry.
Yes, they do. They do come onsite for assessments.
Okay, mostly for assessments.
Yes.
Can I be a little more rowdy too on that question, that the adults? Do you all get any funding for that, do you? Okay.
This is something that we have to offer, we're required to offer it. But Kathleen does an amazing job of monitoring those students. And when they're not logging in and when they're not making progress, she's on them. And if you want to continue in the program, you have to make progress. And she's amazing at the results that she is able to get, um, for students who maybe traditional classroom wasn't effective.
Yeah, I've heard really great things about that, and that's why I wonder, I'm kind of like, like torn, because there are some students that just do do better with that. I do agree with the social emotional for the younger kids, but I wonder about at least expanding it to maybe seven, eight, nine, just to see what kind of enrollment we would get in that program and if that would be help with some of those students that really do struggle to be in a classroom. I don't know developmentally, like, the students in those grades, if they are, because you have to have a level of self-discipline, and I don't know, or developmentally, that's, you know, that capability is there at seven and eight, but I would be curious about that.
And what's really interesting, Kathleen has a lab, it's a really nice-sized lab there. And the kids can, they can make appointments, they can come in every day and just say, I'm going to be here every day, because this is where I work best. And so, almost any day you go in there, and it's at least half-full, if not more than that. So, kids are using it, you know, adults, young adults are using it, um, to come in, because they know they need that discipline too. So, and her staff is just really great, so.
That'd be another thing I'd be questioning about, if, if it's appropriate to have that, to either age group, I don't know, age group together. But, so when you want us to vote on this, is it going to be the entire program? Or is it, if we do something like.
I'm looking at you, um, yeah.
Oh, this is, I did look at these earlier.
Yeah, yeah, so here's the answer to Dana's question. So, these are what we see as their options. Um, option A would be the K-12 virtual plan with the million and a half dollar transfer from ESSR.
It's going to be two million dollars total.
Two million total. Um, B would be to approve a seven-12 virtual plan, um, for the twenty-one, twenty-two implementation. So, that would be adding those middle schools to it. And C would be no action, and it just leaves it with the current nine-12, and we don't do anything. We'd like to recommend option B. And pardon, at least my rationale, I'll take it in comparison if she has a different one. And I'm probably going to give too much personal opinion here, but in the navigating next document, they said we still need to continue to give families options. And they suggested that all the districts look at a virtual program, but then they took our dollars away. So, I, I have really mixed feelings about, okay, state, you said do this, but then you changed the way it's funded, and now it's almo, almost impossible to really look at it and make it work. But, this would, Plan B would be a step in the right direction. It would show growth of a current program. And my other side of my brain is in KISA. So, I'm sitting here thinking, growth of options for families, community support, things that will maybe bump up that KISA picture a little bit on things that we're offering to families. So, that's kind of my, my soapbox, I guess, on that one.
Well, again, I see it from a financial perspective. When else are we going to have an opportunity where we have a bucket of dollars that we can, if we choose to, invest in this option and see if it works? Because going back to what we talked about previously, it's not guaranteed we would do it every year. We would look at it at the end of the year and see, was that a good investment for our dollars? And if we find out that it wasn't, well, then at least we didn't find cost-cutting measures somewhere to try it and were able to utilize dollars that were for that purpose. Um, and if we find that it works great, then around three years from now, we'll have to figure out how we fund it. But at least it, it gives us an opportunity to try it, because I'm kind of even happy. There's, there's probably some kids that it will help, and I, I'm curious to know how many.
Well, and that's, I guess that would be a follow-up question, and I promise you, I did look at this earlier. I don't, I don't have it in my mind, but, um, my question would be, so, do we get to see the enrollment numbers first? Or do we have to dedicate that solid number of dollars to the program before knowing? Because, you know, what if we only get like five students that enroll? So, is that number set at, what was it, like four hundred thousand or something? Sorry, I should have, like, brought my thing, but, but, um, so that's my question. Do we have to definitely spend that money before we know what enrollment looks like?
I think we set it aside for that, and then when we find out what enrollment is, and this is just my response, you can tell me if I'm wrong. But then we look at, like we do with every other thing at the beginning of the year, we look at what our actual enrollment is. Heath is looking at a projected enrollment now, but when our actuals come in, he's still shimmying things around to make things work, because that's where kids land in, maybe differently than what we projected. So, in this case, we hired one extra teacher. Um, so depending on the numbers, I mean, you're still have a teacher for seventh, eighth grade component. Um, hopefully, there would be enough for at least to support one teacher. Um, if not, that would be something that we can decide. But you've got a para, you've got, um, a CISO and a secretary. So, there are some classified staff that maybe wouldn't need to be added to the program if those duties could be absorbed by our current virtual program personnel. Um, so to me, I guess I would think we could address it at that time. And if it ends up that we only need to invest a hundred and fifty thousand, because our enrollment was really low, then those, then those dollars then would be freed up to the other things. But, you have a pair?
Yeah.
I know we have ESSR dollars now, but are there any kind of programs out there, any kind of grant programs that would help sustain virtual school? Think you could down the road a little bit? Just looking at any kind of grants or.
I, I'm not worried, but that doesn't mean there aren't any, and we maybe need to. Usually, the state's pretty good about sending those out, and I haven't seen anything come out for virtual.
Also, if you get some existing data that says, if you give us this money, this is what will happen, it's nice to have.
And notice, even in our options, we only said for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, because we do want to evaluate the infancy. We're not saying this is something we want for the next three years, because we only have ESSR for the next three years. We want to say, let's give it a try and then evaluate it.
Not too bad, Dr. Bronn, is here on a legislative side of things, but, um, I still wonder if there isn't some opportunity to make the argument of why that funding, it's a recommendation, please do it, but no funds. I, I don't, it seems like there's still a conversation to be had.
Probably, my guess is it just goes back to, if you look at what it was going to cost for the middle school program, we would actually make money. And we actually made money at our high school program, because it just doesn't cost as much to educate a student through edgenuity who's doing their own online learning. There's not a teacher directly in front of each and every class. So, I'm sure in their minds, they went, well, it's just like our virtual program now, it doesn't cost as much. So, it was only at the elementary level that we really saw a problem, because you really need more one-on-one at each grade level. Whereas at those other levels, when they're using edgenuity, it's a little bit different.
And, and I will tell you, I called KSDE and Tom Chu, um, Dr. David Ferncock, who's in charge of the virtual programs for the state. And when I told him we were looking at an option where our teachers would actually be live teaching via Zoom to our kids, which is what our virtual folks recommended. He said, there's only two others in the state that are doing that. Everybody else is using a canned program like edgenuity, even for the little bitty ones. And we just didn't feel like that was a viable option for us to look at at this time.
Or in some other cases, they're forming out to a completely different entity, um, like a service center.
I'm, I'm curious, and, and this is kind of a side note, but I'd be curious to see the average time a student is in ver, in virtual school currently in our virtual program? Do they spend all four years in the ver, you know, you know what I'm saying? So, what's the average time that a student spends in the virtual school?
I can probably get that for you, Dana.
I would love to see that, and I'd also like to see, and I know, um, Mr. Phil, this. I would love to see that. And I'd also like to see, and I know Mr. Felvis has presented to us before, but I'd kind of like to see, like, are those students, where do those students? And, you know, we're constantly talking about graduation and secondary and those kinds of things. I'd kind of be curious about that too. I don't, I don't, has he presented that this year?
Yes, he presented the, he wrote their graduation right now because it's blended in with the alternate center. So they're put together, which is one of the reasons the state is saying make the virtual school their own entity because they want to keep separate data for the virtual programs as opposed to alternative centers or, you know, a program of. So that's why they're asking it to go that way.
If you have that, I'd be curious to see.
I'll sure work with Kathleen this if we can't get that. If you're friends with Kathleen on Facebook, she's just kind of a hoot to watch. But she cheers her kids on. And I swear, almost every day, Borsha, I heard, yes. I mean, it's, so-and-so graduated from the Virtual Academy today. So that's the neat thing. They work at their pace. And if they finish today, their name's out there. They graduated, yay, you know, and they're done. So that's really the cool thing. And she absolutely celebrates every kid. She's got a bulletin board up there and they get to bring in their picture and they're putting out the third phone picture up there. And it's really cool.
On the flip side, she'll run a rush shot on them too. So the very currency court, I tell all of my kids who are in virtual school, she has me on speed dial. I will know if you are not going to school and I will get you back in court.
Yeah. She knows her kids.
Yeah, she does. It's great. It's great information for me. It makes my job a lot easier having her.
That's why I think the phone call will have some information for you.
Thank you.
Well, I think that's it for presentations.
Okay. Thank you. That takes us to more open discussion. Dana, do you have anything? No. Janine? Mark?
Nope. Oh, no, we could, we could all do. I'm just concerned that, did we continue to look for what we're learning out of this crisis? And I'm sure enough, it's basically a do or leave. So who knows?
Oh, I did remember something. It has been so awesome to get to go in person and see orchestra and those kinds of things. So good job to the music people and all the production, or I guess the call productions of the concerts. It's been awesome. Dr. Hinton?
I have nothing.
Alex?
The only thing I got, we've got a ballot for KESHA for the Board of Directors and for the Appeal Board. There's just two people who are actually listed. Matt McKay from Mueller for the Board of Directors and Jeff Colzer from Anaga, USD 322 for the Appeal Board. Or we can write somebody in, unless there's some huge statement between now and April 12, because we have to vote by April 15. I'm going to ask Stephanie to put this on the consent agenda so we can submit our ballot. So that's all I have. The next meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Monday, April 12, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the board meeting rooms of the ESC. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
By adjourned to the jury at second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? Peter, please raise your hands. opposed? It was a first one, you didn't delay your answer. Thank you all. Great meeting.